Calling this meeting to order, Ms. Baylor?
Yes, Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Here.
Mayor Win.
Yes. I'd like to ask everybody to rise with us and invite Mr. Okiriki to lead us in the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we humbly ask that you bless all who are assembled here this evening and the work we seek to do. Help us to work in harmony as we seek to make the best decisions for our Getting Grove community. Lord, we also pray for and remember with compassion those who died or were injured in the senseless tragedy a few days ago in Orlando, Florida. We ask for your eternal blessings on the souls of the reported 49 innocent victims who died in that tragedy. Let their death not be in vain. Let it perpetually remind all of us what can happen when we depart from the basic truth that though we may be different in many ways, we are all God's creation worthy of preservation and love. Father, we ask that you strengthen and nurture us to accommodate, love and serve one another selflessly so that in the end we come to live in a world of peace for all mankind. And finally, Father, renew us here in Getting Grove with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community that is together and united in pursuit of freedom, tolerance, mutual understanding, happiness, and the best quality of life for all of our citizens. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember Beard, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please face the flag, right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a couple of presentations tonight.
Yes, our first presentation is recognition of the 2016 Senior Volunteer Man and Woman of the Year, and Kingsley Okiriki will be reading that.
Thank you. I'm Senator Clark. This evening, the City of Getting Grove Council is proud to recognize two special individuals who have enhanced the Getting Grove community with their spirit of service. They are the Senior Volunteer Man and Woman of the Year, also known as the 2016 Strawberry Ball King and Queen. Would Larry Gray and Stephanie Estrada please come forward to the podium? Larry, born in Oakland, California, has been an active resident of Getting Grove for over 60 years. As a design electrical draughtsman, he designed the green circuit boards you see in electronic devices. In his free time, Larry enjoys researching genealogy and taking photographs. Currently, he belongs to two local travel groups and volunteers at the senior center as the weekly bingo caller. Stephanie was born in Lucas Falls Bay, Arizona. She's been a resident of Getting Grove for 17 years. Stephanie worked in accounts payable and is currently in her seven years having as a cheerwoman for the Getting Grove Moose Lodge. Within the community, she is known to go above and beyond and think outside the box when hosting events and fundraisers to support the Getting Grove Moose Lodge. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Larry Gray and Stephanie Estrada with a gift in recognition of their selection as the Senior Volunteer Man and Woman of the Year and the 2016 Strawberry Ball King and Queen. The city thanks both of you for your service to the city and the community of Getting Grove. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for listening.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Say, Mayor, I think I'm the official photographer.
You've been promoted.
Other related duties as required. The ends come in a little bit. Very good.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. And we have another one?
We have another presentation regarding the city's 60th anniversary celebration. John Montaniz is here.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm here to give you an update on the 60th anniversary and remind the public that this Saturday, June 18th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Village Green Park, the city will be hosting a fun-filled family event to celebrate. In addition to the city's 60th anniversary, the Getting Grove Unified School District is completing the celebration of their 50 years and will be celebrating the two anniversaries together. The festivities will begin with performances from the school district's dance team, choirs, jazz ensemble, drum lines, and mariachi bands. In the courtyard center, local youth will also showcase their artistic talents in an art show. Also in the courtyard center, a mini-museum curated by the Garden Grove Historical Society and two park recreation and arts commissioners will feature photo galleries and historical timelines. Pop-up pictures of iconic Garden Grove athletes, actors, and military heroes will be displayed throughout the park as well. Activities in the park will include a teen zone filled with large skilled-based inflatables and a lounge area, a sugar shack with retro candy, a carnival corner with carnival games, face painters, and an interactive art workshop, a classic car show displaying cars from all six decades, a food zone with food trucks, the slurpee machine, and the district's booster clubs selling foods and snacks. Our welcome center will be giving away commemorative beach balls, cups, hand fans, and sunglasses. At 6:00 p.m., we invite the mayor and city council in leading the crowd in wishing the city a happy 60th, then cutting a custom birthday cake with the first 1,000 guests enjoying free cupcakes. The evening will culminate from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. with a performance by Soto, a popular Southern California band, delivering high-energy songs from the '60s to the top 40 sounds of today. At 8:00 p.m., the festivities will conclude at the park, but we invite everyone to follow the glowing sticks down to Historic Main Street where the Downtown Business Association will host a Glow After Party. That event includes a DJ, kids' arts activities, dance demos, giveaways, a beer trailer, and the popular SoCal band Stone Soul. We invite everyone to visit the restaurants and enjoy some music. Throughout the year, the city has been promoting the 60th anniversary through many different Publicating ads have gone out to three Vietnamese, two Spanish, two English, and two Korean newspapers, as well as Facebook and Twitter ads. Promotions citywide include over-the-street banners, T-signs, and flyers to every student at the district. In conclusion, we hope to see every resident come out and celebrate with us this Saturday starting at 4:00 p.m. at Village Green Park. And for more information, you can click on the "Join the Celebration" banner on the city's website and follow us on Facebook and Twitter. Thank you for your time, and this concludes my update, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. So, 4:00 p.m., Saturday, June 18th, at Village Green Park. That's where the huge birthday party for our city is going to be. We're turning 60, and the school district is turning 50. So, everyone is invited, 4:00 p.m., Saturday, June 18th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you so much for the presentation. And so, right now, I'm going to, you know, we do have a cake, I guess, for me, but I think we should hear from the people first. So, John Wild Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and City Manager. I guess I'm talking to a marijuana task force of one person. A few weeks ago, you persuaded the rest of the council to go with a map that had mild popularity, just a slight majority. However, two marijuana meetings and the last city council, overwhelming majority of people did not want to lift the ban on marijuana in Garden Grove. However, you did in fact spend a lot of time, 27 minutes in all, trying to persuade the others who just sat on their hands. Now, the thing is, I can see three possible arguments that you might have for wanting to lift the ban: medication, recreation, and taxation. As far as medication is concerned, a doctor with M.D. after his name can prescribe marijuana in pill form. For those people that cannot take pills, there is such a thing as an inhaler, and there's also nasal sprays. So, you know, there's no need for a 16-year-old kid on a skateboard to have such a bad headache that he needs medical marijuana. Recreation, I can't really argue a great deal about that. I would wish we could go back to the days when people would pass a joint around at parties and things like that, but it's come to the point, you know, just a few years ago, of course, in Garden Grove, just four or five years ago, there was a marijuana outlet on every street corner. We were advertising the stuff. I don't judge people by smoking pot, but we don't need to advertise it. As far as taxation is concerned, we're not gathering taxes from the City of Garden Grove from probably about half of the businesses right now. The reason for that is we're not going out knocking on doors. We did have somebody about four years ago come to my office to see if I had a business tax certificate. A lot of the community in Garden Grove does not collect sales tax as cash-only basis. So, here's a revenue that we could start to collect before we even think about taxing drugs in any way, shape, or form. Like I say, the overwhelming majority of people at those meetings, the two marijuana task force meetings plus last city council, if you go back and look at the tape as I did yesterday, overwhelming majority, probably nine out of 10 people spoke to keep the ban. I hope you will keep the ban. I hope you won't even bother putting it on the ballot in November. So, you know, the four council members here all have children ranging from a little toddler to soccer stars and/or adult children. You have to think in terms of, we don't want to be advertising drugs to children, and that's what we will be doing if we legalize pot shops. You can't even limit them to a number of people because there'll always be a lawsuit. Somebody will say that, you know, why can't I have my pot shop? If you, I mean, I think Santa Ana is suffering this at the moment. They allowed so many pot shops, but unfortunately, they're going to lose the battle and there'll be marijuana outlets on every street corner. So, I think we have to, you know, put a cap on it now, go back to the old days when people smoked, you know, privately at parties, the police turned a blind eye if it was under a certain amount, et cetera. And I think you have to listen to our police department as well because our police chief, he's so much against it, and so are so many police chiefs around the country. So, please, please reconsider, Mr. Mayor. Okay? Thank you. Bye-bye.
Jerry Grabow.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jerry Grabow. I've lived on Pine Street and 12,500 block for the last 25 years and owned a home on that street. Let me start off by saying that I'm very supportive of the Strawberry Festival and what it stands for and the project, the money is raised from that event. But in the past years, the street that I live on, which is just north of here, they've always blocked that street off to public access to, so the residents in that area can park, it's not a lot of street traffic going through, and so on and so forth. And in doing that, it forces the festival goers to park in public lots. And so, with that being said, this year, they did not block those streets off, and it became a very large problem for anybody that parks on the street. And I would ask that they look into that. Now, I, the president of AMA District 37, which we race motorcycles on BLM land, we have to pull permits for those events, and part of that permit process is showing that the event has proper staffing. So, when we called the police department to inquire the reasons why the streets were not blocked off, they came back and said that they didn't have staffing adequate to close those streets off. So, I would ask that you guys, if it's appropriate, that you guys would look into that, the requirements of that permit, and the fact that there needs to be adequate staffing to host that event, and if the event doesn't get adequate staffing, that it's not issue to permit. Again, you know, I mean, I'm not against the festival. I like the fact that it's there. My kids went there and that, so I would ask that you guys look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Will we take note of that, Mr. Styles?
Yes.
Thank you. Janine Grabow.
Good evening. My name is Janine Grabow, and you just heard my husband speak. I am going to speak quickly on his topic, the Strawberry Festival. Things I would like to note is that, number one, there was a press release to the community announcing the fact that we would have street closures, as we have in the past, and the resident parking passes were also passed out, as they have been in the past. So, when we came home to find our street completely full of cars, you can imagine how surprised we were because we had every idea that you were going to do what you always did, and you didn't. So, the other thing that I'm talking on is the street closures for the Disney Half Marathon. I think you have another one coming up in September, but in January of this year, if you live between, in the area surrounded by Euclid, Chapman, Harbor, and Garden Grove Boulevard, you cannot get out of your neighborhood, period, at all, unless you're in an ambulance. And from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 or so a.m., I think is too long to go without allowing people to, you know, at least have one or two exits. That particular day, people were driving through the neighborhood. We were like little rats trying to find a way out, and ultimately, people started lining up on lambsion from Harbor all the way to Ninth Street, and the line of traffic was continuing to grow, waiting to get out of the neighborhood, and I think that's unacceptable. I understand that it's a timed event, and I think that the runners or walkers that are serious competitors, I think they would generally start very early, and the walkers and the more recreational participants are the ones that are going to be there between 8:00 and 9:00 and later, and I think that they should, those people should be able to be stopped to allow traffic to exit. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I believe this is the second person who's spoken about these concerns in relation to the Disney Half Marathon. So, if this comes back to council, I would like it to be in the staff report that we did have, at least from my memory, two folks speaking against, or advising us on how to remedy some of their concerns.
Mr. Mayor, we will certainly get with our public safety staff. I know after every event, they review procedures, lessons learned, things that they can do, so we'll be certainly taking that under advisement and, you know, taking these concerns to heart and...
That particular day, people were driving through the neighborhood. We were like little rats trying to find a way out, and ultimately, people started lining up on Lamson, um, from Harbor all the way to Ninth Street, and the line of traffic was continuing to grow, waiting to get out of the neighborhood. Um, and I think that's unacceptable. Um, I understand that it's a timed event, and I think that the runners or walkers that are serious competitors, um, I think they would generally start very early, and the walkers and the more recreational participants are the ones that are gonna be there between 8:00 and 9:00 and later, and I think that they should, those people should be able to be stopped to allow traffic to exit. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I believe this is the second, uh, person who's spoken about these concerns in relation to the Disney Half Marathon. So, if the, if this comes back to council, I would like it to be in the staff report that we did have, uh, at least from my memory, two folks speaking against, uh, or, or advising us on how to remedy some of their concerns.
Mr. Mayor, we'll, uh, we will certainly, um, you know, get with our public safety staff. I, I know after every, every event, they review procedures, lessons learned, things that they can do, so we'll be certainly taking that under advisement and, you know, taking these concerns to heart and trying to do what we can do to minimize inconvenience of people, so I appreciate that.
Great. Thank you. Douglas Hughes, and following Douglas Hughes would be Brian Lau, and then Clay Bach.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, I want to, uh, thank Councilman Bowie for, uh, talking to Sister Miriam, and I want the council and all that are here to know that I'm here speaking as power of attorney from Sister Miriam, because there was a gentleman over on this side the last time was here, said he has no business in this. He is not the owner of the property. Well, if it would make any difference, I'd have him put the property back in my name, but it would do no good, because it'd still be the same problem. And I thank, uh, Councilman Bowie for that concern. Now, I have since last time called four to a half a dozen times to make an appointment with all of you privately with Sister Miriam, myself, and her interpreter Jennifer. Each time, I left my phone number and name, and I'd call back. No one's called me back. Well, this, the, the secretary, she's on another project. Well, could you take care of it? No, she has to take care of this. And now, when I call, I get a recording, so I leave my name and number, so I can only assume what you would assume. Somebody doesn't wanna talk to me. And it's a sad thing that I have to go through this again, but I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna review it. In 2015, last year, I sold the property to them. I received no money, because I wanna help the sisters any way I can, and then, once they have their childcare working, I will receive on a monthly ba- basis for 15 years, and I'll be 80 this October, so if I live to be 95, I won't care. Now, we're gonna talk about the planning department. The sisters were scared, because in the planning, uh, gosh, what do you call it? The public meeting that takes place with the planning commission that are appointed, they debated this for an hour, and during one of the recesses, I don't know how it was said, but it was implied this way. If you ever wanna get a permit for your childcare, you have to work with the city. Now, so all of you know what we're talking about. This is a house over here. This is a garage that's been, I've had it for 50 years.
Sir, please address the panel.
Pardon?
Please address this panel.
Okay. For 50 years, I've had this building, and I never had a parking problem. The driveway on the building is 10 and 1/2 feet wide. The streets you rode on to drive here today, none of them are 10 and 1/2 feet wide. You'd be lucky if you found a 10-footer. That would be a wide one, and some of them are going 45, 55 miles an hour, but most of them 45. Fire trucks and large trucks go down them, and they don't have a problem. But the planning department under your power, because you are the last word on this, they said it's for child's safety. And again, unfortunately, I wasn't there. Show me how it's for child's safety, because we had children coming in and out, off of the property with getting haircuts in the barber shop, and sometimes, at certain times, a lot of them, but no one was hurt. If you make the driveway wider by cutting the gar- the garage in two, you're making the traffic go faster. And Kara said, well, put up a speed bump. Why make it wider and put up a speed bump? It's for the child's safety. Well, how is it for the child's safety? Uh, uh, well, uh, Baba, there's no answer. There's no code on the books that says that garage should be cut in two. No setback, no statute or decree on the city planning code. None in the county, none in the state. Then they said to me, again, it's for the child's pa- safety, and the fire chief said we have to get the fire truck in the back.
Please wrap up, Mr. Hughes.
Well, you don't wanna hear the part of it, uh, but I wanna finish it. I did it last time. I wanna do it again. They lied to us, saying that the fire chief wanted to get that back truck through there. So, I finally said, no, no way. I drove a truck.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
And I went back to the fire chief. He said no way would park the truck in the, in the front or in the alley.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
But not in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
The second lie that I got-
Sir, your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you.
Why don't you have the, uh, officer of law-
Sir?
-throw me out? Because this is a mortal sin that you're letting take place. If there was a reason for cutting it, I would bite the bullet. Example, they-
Sir, your time is up.
I'm not leaving until I finish this. If you would've let the secretary make an appointment with you, then I wouldn't be here today. So, it's a two-way street. You avoided me. I was gonna bring the nun to prove that I have the power of attorney-
Please take your seat, sir. I'm gonna ask our city attorney to advise us further in this. I like to, uh, have my memory fresh. Please take your seat. Please-
Now, tell me again what you're gonna have the city attorney do?
Uh, give us an explanation.
Or what?
Please take your seat.
Okay. Ask them-
Sir, your time is up. Please take your seat.
Well, I'll throw it back at you. The-
You're out of order, and you're in a public meeting-
Yeah, I know I am. I know I am, but I'm gonna tell you that, and I'll oblige you. I, I honor the police department, and I will leave.
Mayor, perhaps we can take a break?
But I, I'm ashamed that you would not let. Are you gonna talk on this? Are they gonna talk anymore on?
Thank you. Uh, so, I remember asking our city attorney, uh, to brief us on this issue, and I'd like you to please refresh my memory, our memory, and, and if, Mr. Bowie, do you have anything to share from your meeting? Okay.
Basically, his, um, complaining about a condition of approval that was imposed on the approval of a conditional use permit for a daycare center, and he is unhappy with one of the conditions of approval that requires, uh, a larger access to the property. In order to get that access, they have to cut one, uh, a garage structure in half, and he wants the city council to lift that condition so that the garage doesn't have to be cut in half.
Okay. So, the city council has that authority?
At this point, it does not. The city, they could have appealed the condition, uh, placed by the planning commission to the city council. They had 21 days to do so. It was not appealed, so it's not, it wouldn't be proper before the city council at this time.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, that, that issue is done. It went through its due process by law, and so that issue is done. Thank you so much. Brian Lau?
My name is Brian, and I'd like to, to pass out this printed copy of a layout that I have created for this program that I'd like to present. We'll share.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council board and Garden Grove residents. I've come today to propose a public recycling program for the city of Garden Grove. This program helps in many ways to improve our city's environment while helping fund educational and pro- training programs in Orange County. The program I propose asks for the city to allocate funds into recycling bins to place in all public parks and public transit. You see, we have a, we experienced a problem today that many people around the world face, and that is pollution. Looking at the world around us, devastating impacts from trash and air contaminants continually destroy our planet every year, and yet, not enough is being done to present it, prevent it. For example, looking at, I'm not, I'm not sure that if a lot of people know about this incident in Vietnam, but there is this thing called the fish kill, and it's when this comp- there's this company called Sambrosa where they, it's, it's suspected that they, they poured, um, chemical waste into the ocean, 300 tons, and the next day, about 80 tons of fish showed up in Vietnam's central shore, and it's, it's pollution, and it's affecting the people nearby, and they, they're losing their jobs, and they, they can't continually live what, a lifestyle that we can live. Like, looking at Flint as well, you know, water pollution, and, which is why I've come today to propose a solution to the city and ask for the city to provide funds to putting recyc- recycling bins around the city. There are, the, where they are placed would be in all the public parks and major intersections of the city. There are currently 19 parks in about 16 major intersections. I have a map that my partner and I have made, and we have circled some spots that we would like to, it, it'd be decided by the city council, but it's just a suggestion of what we could do and how it could be done, and it's, it's an estimate cost about $10,000, but it, with, with the bins, about $300 each. And with this program in place, we can expect to make our profits back through recycling. Um, I have called Santa Clarita City, a man named Mr. Curtis from the environmental department. Um, he has, he told me that he has a program similar to this, and they make about $900 a year through recycling, and this, this shows that this program can actually work. You know, according to the Orange County Waste Management, cities around us already have this program. Looking at Irvine, Tustin, Orange, Santa Ana, and excluding Santa Clarita, because they're from another county, but they're from Los Angeles, which is so, somewhat near us, um, we will, we will not be the first to have this public program in place. The, talking about maintenance and how it will be done, you know, like, we can, we can put all, we can put all these bins out and, you know, the legality of it, um, I've, I've tried calling Mr. Omar a couple of times, but, um, he, he wasn't in office that time, but, um, concerning the legality of it, if another party does it, like, there's this party, uh, there's this, a company called Orange County Conservation Corps, and what I heard is that, so there's this other conservation corps, it's called the Los Angeles one, and which is what, how Santa Clarita is doing it, is that they have Los Angeles Conservation Corps, um, going around and maintaining the, the bins for us, and the profits, they take those plastics, sell it to the vendors, and those profits go back into training programs, educational training programs. And if we do this program, we can ask our conservation corps, which is Orange County Conservation Corps, and they would do this for free. The maintenance, they would be going around, and all the profits from, all the profits are, go back to the OCCC education training programs throughout Orange County. This is taken from their website. It's, uh, I have a link in the, the pages that I, uh, gave you guys. Yeah. According, we, and that's, as far as, as far as the program, I've reached out to several people about how this works, and I've, I've seen that it can work, and I believe that this is what our sh- city should do to provide a more eco-friendly environment for our people. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Lau. And are you a student in our schools?
Yes. I go to Bolsa Grande High School.
Bolsa Grande High School. It looks like you have some classmates who are supporting you as well?
Yes. Um, I have three classmates with me and my history teacher, who inspired me to do this, and it's basically, she assigned us this thing where we look at our city, I mean, the world, in the U.S. domestically, and we look at a problem and we find a solution and how to find it, and I narrowed it down to the city to see what a student, as I can do, because I, I'm aware that I'm a student, you know?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lau.
Like, one more sentence? I, I also have this petition and of receiving, like, receiving, seeing if people support this program, and in only one week, one week, we've gathered 600 petitions. It's all physical, and it's all real. You can confirm, confirm it with the school.
Okay. Great. Thank you. You know, I, I just wanna say, great job on organizing. We certainly do encourage our students to be involved, and, and speaking in front of the council is a very important step. Uh, I, I will give this proposal to our public works director, who currently oversees the trash bins throughout our city, and, and see what his recommendation will be, and we really appreciate your concerns, uh, and check back in with us, okay? Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Thank you.
Question. Mr. City Manager, could this also be considered by the Parks and Recreation Commission? Kind of involves a program. I mean, we're getting, this is our first viewing of something like this. It has merit on the surface, so in addition to public works, maybe Parks and Rec could also look at this, and maybe the Parks and Rec Commission as well.
Councilman, yes, we can take a look at it comprehensively. Uh, I think it's a great, we'll have, uh, Mr. Murray, you know, and maybe there's a conversation had, be had with Republic Services as well, and see what kind of partnerships might be out there, so.
Great. Thank you. Good work. Clay Bach?
Good evening, mayor and councilmen, and I wanted to speak on the illegal pot shop issue. This is not only a public nuisance, it is a safety issue. Not only is it an eyesore for our city, it's a danger to the public, not only that, it is an annoyance to the surrounding businesses. We have received complaints from your neighbors next door. I'm just expressing the sentiment of the community, the business community, the public, and also the safety of the community. Our responsibility is to keep our city safe. My interest is for the public safety of local business and for all our community. We have more important things to discuss. This should not be the focus of our city. It's blight, it's competition with everything else in our city, it's our 60th anniversary. We have laws. Laws have been violated, it's time to enforce, so that's where I stand. These words of outrage are not my words. They are actually our mayor, Bow Wynn's, words from the last city council meeting. I went to YouTube video of the meeting, so I could write them down exactly, and he was not referring to the pot shops, but to the abandoned building on Brookhurst and Garden Grove Boulevard. But these words also apply precisely to the illegal pot shops here in Garden Grove. These words will never come from our mayor concerning the pot shops, because he's running ads on social media proclaiming his support for the legalization of marijuana, hoping to get votes from marijuana users and money from pot shop owners with his position. So, whatever he has to say on this issue has to be disregarded. I'm also asking that pro-marijuana people stop exploiting people with real illnesses. They definitely should have access, but to use people who have a real need to try to put a pot shop on every street corner is disgraceful. And if you think I'm exaggerating, go to Brookhurst and Chapman, there are three on one street corner, two next to each other, and one above a tutoring center, and there's another four between those and the 22 freeway. So, I hear we have 25 illegal pot shops here in Garden Grove now. I was talking to my building owner last week. He says he gets calls weekly from pot shop owners who want to rent from him. They'll pay him four times his usual rent. I heard the same from a, a friend in another business complex. As I talk here tonight, somewhere in our city, there's more pot shops being set up. We can't sit on our hands and do nothing. The longer we wait, the more expensive and harder it will be to get rid of them. If you wanna put a question on the ballot, it should be, should Garden Grove enforce the ban on marijuana clinics? Let's put that on the ballot, get a real answer how Garden Grove residents feel about it. I applaud and urge the city council members to move quickly to enforce the ban on these clinics. The longer we wait, the more teenagers will be hooked on it, the more of our Garden Grove businesses will be victimized. And I'm also urging any voter to vote no in November on the legalization of marijuana in California. I met a guy at the Strawberry Festival. He's from Oregon. I asked him how it was going. He says, there's pot shops on every corner. You can't go anywhere in the city without your family, with your family, without smelling marijuana smoke. So, it isn't just a few people getting their preferred drug. It will greatly affect yours, your children, and your grandchildren's quality of life. And this, this is actually, this was put together, it's a 170-page document by the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, which is a department of the federal governments. It's 170 pages, and basically on the impact legalization has had on, um, the, the, um, state of Colorado. And, um, basically, here's a few points that it may- And, um, basically, here's a few points that it makes. Since marijuana's been legalized in Colorado, marijuana-related deaths increased 32%. Almost 20% of all traffic deaths were marijuana-related, compared to only 10% less than five years ago. Marijuana-related emergency department visits increased 29%. Marijuana-related hospitalization increased 38%. Marijuana-related calls to the Rocky Mountain Poison Center increased 72%. So Colorado teenagers now rank number three in the nation for marijuana use, and 56% higher than the national average. Colorado-age, uh, college students rank number two in marijuana use, and 54% higher than the national average.
I think they dropped there.
Um, what's that?
I think they dropped their numbers there.
Not according to this, but, which, like I say, you can find it on the internet. And as a survey from, uh, resource counselors and officers from, um, the school districts, they say pot's a huge problem in the school, their kids are being expelled daily, coming back, um, to the school on marijuana, and they usually get it from people who have the licenses or family members.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, I just want to be very clear here, we do need to enforce our laws. I'm taking the privilege to do so, uh, to speak on this, and if you watch the entire video where we do discuss that, we've made that clear. And it is I, as mayor, who've taken the initiative to agendize initiating litigation on some dispensaries. So our police department has been working very hard to keep our city safe, and we do support them in enforcing the existing laws, specifically the ban on dispensaries and cultivation. However, at the same time, the discussion that we've been talking about is not on lifting the ban. That's not our discussion. The task force is still in place, and we are exploring solutions to the very issues that you've brought forward, including the issues and concerns that have been brought forward by the community during those two forums. So we are working on this, there is a ban in place. We, as a council, as a city, as a police department, do not agree with having the current illegally operating dispensaries in our city, and we are looking for better solutions. Thank you for bringing your comments forward. Hilda Mendez.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, well, you answered my question about the ban, and thank you. And is, in any way, we can move forward to maybe moving the medical marijuana to maybe the pharmaceutical arena, so we don't have these? Like CBS, Sevon, this kind of stuff? And also, what can we do to do that, to move it forward, get it off our streets, and really address it and aim it to the people who are really in need of this medical? Uh, because I'm aware of the medical, uh, what do you call it, um, benefits to this. And my second question is, what about the building in Garden Grove and Chapman? Or is it Garden Grove and, uh, Brookhurst? Thank you.
I, I, I believe the answer to the second question, I believe the date is now August 8th, am I correct? When are we looking at this? I know, this is the, it'll be the fifth time, it'll come before the council, just for the record. Uh, August 9th, right, is going to be back, so you're welcome to come back and find out what happens to Rusty Skeleton, or not happen to it, on August 9th. It'll be very exciting. And I, I do know that, um, some of the solutions that have been brought forward to address the illegal access, especially from youth, which none of us want to see, are actually regulations, because cities have the ability to have regulatory measures. So that's that, and of course, certainly, the current laws that we do have, we're enforcing. Charles Mitchell. And following Charles Mitchell would be Gloria Bonn. Bren.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. My name is Charles Alva Mitchell Jr. Obviously, I'm named after my father. I'm also named after my grandfather, Alva Mitchell. Interestingly enough, there is a town called Alva in Oklahoma, I don't know if there's a connection. But when I was born, because I have, uh, Native American heritage, I have a very red One of my aunts looked at me and said, "He looks like an angry little Irishman, I'm going to call him Mike." Well, that's what my family has called me ever since. When I was growing up, all of my friends knew me as Mike. But when I went to school, I had to use my regular name, Charles. When I went to high school, I wanted a, a different identity, and I saw so many people with the name Charles, and I said, "No, I'm going to go by my middle name, Alva." And I did, all the way through high school. There were times when I'd go out to visit a friend, and my mother would be trying to get ahold of me, and she'd call around, and she'd ask, "Is Mike there?" "No." She'd call again, "Is Charles there?" "No." Third time, "Is Alva there?" "Oh yeah, he's been here all day." But that's something that we all get used to, is our, our names and our things we go through growing up. When I was, uh, living in Hollywood as a boy, we were within two miles of Sunset and Vine. And one day, coming home from school, a group of us got together, and we got into a rock fight with another group of kids. These were the days when kids rode their bikes without helmets, we played roller derby on the sidewalk. So we had a rock fight with real rocks. One of the kids on the other side got hit in the head. Now, of course, it was not that bad a wound, but to us kids, it looked fatal. I happened to know a friend in the neighborhood, so I said, "I'll take him there," and I took him there, and that friend's mother patched him up. So he claimed that I had saved his life. And from that day on, we were what's known on the internet now as BFF, Best Friends Forever. We did everything together. Eventually, our families moved, and we ended up out in the San Fernando Valley. Even then, we kept in touch. There were times when I would hitchhike 10 miles to go visit him, as I say, this is a different time. But after high school, I went into the Army, he went into the Air Force, and I didn't see him for a long time. Finally, we got together again, he gave me directions on how to get to his house. I looked at the map, he said, "Oh, you live in Anaheim." He said, "No, I live in Garden Grove." I said, "Okay, okay." So I came to visit him, and he said, "I'd like to go to a basketball game tonight. Would you like to come along?" "Sure." So we went to this basketball game. Now, my friend Eddie was, uh, tall and lanky, and he probably played on the basketball team. So we went to the, uh, gymnasium and watched the basketball game, and it was played at his alma mater. And that basketball game was played across the street at Garden Grove High School. Now, we have our celebration coming up next Saturday. I plan to be on Main Street in the evening, and I hope my friend Eddie Taylor is still around, and maybe he'll come to that celebration too, to celebrate how proud he was of Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think you might have more success on Facebook or Twitter, finding him, just an idea. Gloria Brown Bram. Gloria Bram.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Everyone seems to be concerned that you want to lift the ban on medical marijuana facilities. I understand that it's not your intention at this point in time. What I think you should consider seriously, and with great thought, is the regulations and the zoning, and all other items that should be in place before, before you lift that ban. I am in favor of medical marijuana, I know people that have benefited from it. I myself can count the number of times I smoked on one hand with fingers left over. But that's because I was a single parent. Think to yourself, how much is being said now, that is, what was said in the 50s, and in the 60s, and even in the 30s, if you remember that, I think there was a silent film called Marijuana Madness?
Reefer Madness.
Reefer Madness, that's right, which is the most absurd thing I've ever seen in my life.
I like old-school propaganda.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, that's what it is, is propaganda. Because marijuana is less dangerous than crossing the street, as far as I'm concerned, especially in some places in Orange County, and LA, and Hollywood, and San Francisco. Anyway, I get off the point. These regulations need to be in place. There are regulations that prohibit the number of liquor stores, and how close they can be to a school, and how many can be within a one-mile radius or five-mile radius. There is no reason why you cannot set up similar zoning restrictions. And that would even take care of the places that are next to one another, which I didn't know they were there. Anyway, um, that's, that's the main thing I want to say. Get the zoning and the regulations in place now. You can borrow from other cities who have done this before, you can get guidance from the state. It's a lot cheaper to do it before you need it than have to struggle and try to quickly get it in place, and not have it come out so good. The next thing I want to talk on, I think was noise abatement, is that what I wrote down? Okay. Heard too much, I forgot. Um, I moved into the Acacia Villa Apartments, uh, last July. I have a third-floor apartment, my balcony overlooks the parking lot of the church, and to my right, I can see the festival amphitheater. I don't think that the, the fence around that amphitheater is high enough to restrict the flow of sound out to residential areas. In the summer, I have to keep my windows closed, so I can hear my TV, and I'm not deaf. I just have trouble hearing when there's a lot of other noise around. I know that there is a 10 o'clock limit, at least on weekdays, but, uh, I mean, the church has a facility they rent out, and I hear a lot of good music coming out of there very well, uh, because they don't shut the doors. But my main concern is the performances at the amphitheater, because most of them are music way past my age limit, and, um, very strident. I, I, you could go deaf, um, I know, because my son was in a band. Um, I have one other thing to talk about, and that's to, um, complain about any place to sit down during the Strawberry Festival. There was, I had no idea, it was so big, this is my first time. The chairs in the courtyard, um, were gone. The tables were there, but there were no chairs. There was absolutely no place to sit, except on the ground. I can sit on the ground, but then it'll take two of you to get me out. Considerations should be made for your seniors, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bram. And we'll, we'll make note of those, uh, comments regarding the Strawberry Festival and the festival amphitheater. Matt Reed, and then Winfred Zhang, and then Delouise Moore. Is Matt Reed here? Okay. All right, wait a minute, give me one second, this is... Do we want, uh, these folks to speak before 7:00? Mr. Stiles, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I think it's really the preference, uh, I think we were thinking people would want to speak right before the item came up, so...
Okay, okay. I, I didn't see the note here, so, okay. Well, why don't we wait then? Delouise Moore, and then Dawn Zneifel?
Zneifel.
Zneifel?
Good afternoon, my name is Dolores Moore, for the record. Well, I spoke to you guys about a month or two ago, and I voted for everyone's names I noticed on the ballots last week, to let you know. Okay, well, basically, what I'm here again for is regarding the Garden Grove Police Officers. And I don't know, am I in the right place to address the issue? Okay, so I'm here to, I'm looking for recourse, I'm looking for suggestions, and it's regarding the misconduct of Garden Grove Police Officers. And what I am talking about is that I witnessed a young man being beaten, unconscious, by the Garden Grove Police Department. That young man was my son. And when I was witnessing him being beaten, I was screaming and yelling and hollering, asking them to stop, "Stop it, stop it, stop." And then, once I got myself together, I started recording them. So we just went to jury trial on the matter. Actually, I was found guilty. When the officer saw that I was recording, I saw the officers talk to each other, she is recording, and I did something to divert their attention off from, from me, and I started recording again. They came, and they took my cellphone away from me and put me in the police car. Um, and so, we went to court on the matter, I was found guilty, my son was found guilty, and basically, I went into a state of shock. I could not believe what I was witnessing. And getting back to the beating, it was like I was in a Rodney King's video. It was like I was watching Kelly Thomas being beaten. That's how, how bad it was. And so we went to, um, court on the matter, and everyone, when they go to court, they raise their hands, "I solemnly swear to tell the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God, or so help me Your Honor." And I'm thinking, why are, why do we swear to tell the truth, when we know that, when we get to the witness stand, that we are going to lie? And that is a part of, um, when you're, part of the court procedures that basically needs to be left out. Because what happened when the police officers got up there to witness, they falsified the reports, they falsified the testimony, they falsified the transcript, they withheld evidence, and I'm like, "Oh my God, I could not believe it." I went into a state of shock. And when the verdict came down, I got up and I left out of the, out of the courtroom, because I couldn't believe what was happening. Let me see. And when the officers were called out, once, like, once before, I, I, um, have some individuals that, um... that are disabled. And so, they were basically called out on disability, for people that have disability. And one of the officers, when he was inside of my house, like, I'm a happy person. I'm a tiptoe through the tulip-type person. Come on in, come into my house, you know? We can talk about the matter and whatever. And so, my phone was laying on the, was being charged, it was laying on the television stand. And one officer started picking up my cellphone, messing with my cellphone. Another officer, he told me, he said, "Get your son back here and do not let me have to bust your door down." And I'm like, oh wow. Who did I allow in my house? And so, you know, people that are sworn into public positions, they're, they are sworn to protect and serve. And due to the fact I have young people in my life that have disabilities, periodically, I do have to call the police to have the individuals 5150. But right now, it's like if I have to call them, I'm sure, I make sure I have my video recorder. I am very, very much aware that all officers are not, they are not honest. I know that they are protected by immunity. Yeah, yeah, they are. They are protected by immunity because, you know, forever, whatever reason.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Yeah, all right. I like to talk. Thank you, guys. Oh, so recourse, is there someone that can give me suggestions or whatever?
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just going to ask our city manager and city attorney to brief us on, on that situation, that case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn Zneifel and then Maureen Blackman and then Nicholas Dibs.
Honorable Mayor Nguyen, Honorable Councilmember Fat Boy, Honorable Member Chris Beard, Honorable Member Steve Jones and Honorable Member Chris Van. May I speak on the legalization of cannabis, sativa? May I mention that, that perhaps one outlet per municipality would be, may be acceptable? Only one. That is, and that is with, if that particular individual that requested the marijuana had a doctor's prescription. I think that we don't need, I don't think, and Long Beach, as an example, had a number of clinics, that is, stores, that sold marijuana. And they had some very, very, as you know, some serious problems with that proliferation. May I mention, if I may, that I, I go to 19 high schools in Orange County every year that have the junior ROTC program. And I, I see many youths in Army, in San Diego High School, for instance. I go to San Diego High School every year and have for the last 25 years to speak with these youths and ask them what they think of, whether they are free of a chemical substance abuse. And may I mention that the junior ROTC program, the Army Junior ROTC Program at San Diego High School is a marvelous program. It's a marvel. As you remember, Lieutenant Colonel Tex Wonkey, United States Army, retired with a Distinguished Service Cross, was, was a senior Army instructor there for many years. And may I mention that I, I provide awards to the students in his name from the MOWW, that's the Military Order of the World Wars. So what I'm, what I'm mentioning here is I think that maybe the city council should seriously consider maybe just limiting the number of stores to one per municipality. Perhaps, and maybe that would be the best. I, I think one is plenty. And I think that you could also tax cannabis. That might be an idea for you. I think, in fact, I wouldn't, I wouldn't allow it in, in my municipality if I had one, without severe, heavy taxation. I wanted, I wanted to mention, by the way, a story about an OIF vet, Operation Wrecking Freedom vet, that came back with PTSD. He self-medicated on marijuana, to the extent where it became debilitating for him. I had to 5150 him a number of times. And this is a tragic story about him. The self-medication grew chronic. The brain cells, where, of his brain cells were drastically reduced. Marijuana will do that. Studies have proven that they do greatly inhibit the production of brain cells and also cause the destruction of brain cells. May I mention that now, this particular individual is, he's living at home with his parents. Here, he's almost 40 years old now. And he doesn't, has, his individual initiative is destroyed. His self-confidence, his self-worth is destroyed, all because he, he abused a chemical substance that was a controlled substance. Mayor, may I mention, city council members, I beg you to limit the number of stores just to one within your city, your fair and great city. I thank you.
Maureen Blackman.
Good evening, gentlemen. Is this, like, super loud or is it my ears turned into, like, ears like fleas? Anyway, one thing I wanted to do tonight was to express my, there are really no words to express the sadness and the, on the senseless slaughter for the innocent people in Orlando. And it's easy to become numb to these events, but we have a duty as humans not to become numb and want to take that opportunity to say how senseless it was and how horrific it was. I also want to take the time to express my thanks to the first responders and the police who had to come to the aid of the victims and to the people in the club that night. And I know that if that was in Garden Grove, our officers would do the same and they would have to go through that. And I am assured that they probably feel a deep sense of frustration and sadness, even though we're coast cells apart. Also, I'd like to take the time to say that a well-trained force is something that we should have and we should focus on, because this could happen anywhere. I also would end on that note, but please keep it in your mind that when you are making these budgets, that these guys have to go through this all the time. It's something that they're trained for. They probably never wish they'd have to go through it. They'll never get it out of their minds and we owe it to them to kind of beef their force up. I want to just reinforce what Clay said about the shops, the marijuana shops. I don't think they need it now. I'm not going to go into belaborate. I feel like it's a time to just focus on the sadness, if you will. But we don't need the shops, we don't need to strain on the force. And I'd like to enforce the ban as much as we could. Thank you.
Mayor Nguyen, members of the city council, staff and visitors and citizens of Garden Grove. My name is Nicholas Dibs. I am a longtime resident of Garden Grove. I'm a homeowner also, near Surillian and Valley View. I want to give you an update regarding the re-establishment of Youth and Government Day. I brought this up to the council a number of times, as well as to the Garden Grove Unified School District. I do not speak for them. I am a teacher, a science teacher since 1992, and I've been with the district since 2001. I just, as a former ASB officer at Pacifica High School where I graduated, I remember being a city councilman for the day and participating in government and being exposed to municipal government. So I just want to thank Kim Hoy and her staff, John Montanches, for meeting with district staff back on June 6th. And they're putting together, as I understand it, a proposal for the school board to consider. And hopefully, this will move forward sometime during the next school year. And I want to thank Mr. Lau from, student from Bolso Grande High School for having the initiative to propose his recycling endeavor. And I think we do need to engage our students as much as possible. Now, with regard to, I, I am a candidate for, for school board, but whether or not I'm a candidate or not, there are some things that I've suggested that need to happen. But moving forward, out on the campaign trail, I run across parents and I've had some parents mention to me a public safety issue that I think the city should be aware of. We've had, it's been brought to my attention that we've had three traffic accidents in the past school year near the corner of Springdale and Lamson at Barker Elementary School. There's not enough space there for the parents to drop off their students with the cars lined up and so on. And what's needed is a, if the city and the Traffic Commission could please consider putting in a signal light for pedestrians that are going across Springdale, just south of Lamson, like we have at, near Dale and, and, near Dale and Lamson. At that site, at that elementary school, we have that in place. Now, the crossing guards, and a crossing guard would be good. And I don't know if it's the school district that provides a crossing guard or the city. But in any case, if you could please ask the Traffic Commission to look at this. It's, I had a parent, two parents yesterday tell me this is a disaster waiting to happen. We don't need any students being run over by cars or getting into an accident there. Could the city please put in, look into putting in a pedestrian crosswalk across Springdale, south of Lamson, across, right there where the elementary school is? That's another important point. With regard to medicinal or medical marijuana, I am, want to go on record that I am against this. And I want to point out to the council that Long Beach, the city of Long Beach recently put a ban in place, or has already established a ban. And they're a pretty liberal city in many ways. They have a ban in place. As a scientist with a degree in biology and a minor in chemistry from Cal State Long Beach, what I can say is, it's my understanding that if those who need this for medical reasons, that it's possible to get cannabis with, and have the harmful effects removed, compound, plant compounds removed before they get it. So, but as a city, I think we ought to hold tight to the ban. Thank you very much.
Judge Jim Gray, the Honorable Jim Gray.
Judge, good to see you. Thank you. I speak to you, yes, as a retired judge of the Orange County Superior Court. And in fact, my history goes back quite a ways with this. So I, actually, in 1992, did something very unusual for a sitting trial court judge and I held a press conference saying our nation's drug policy is not working, particularly with regard to marijuana. Because I've heard the name or the word "ban" used quite a bit. There's no such thing as a ban on marijuana. The question is, are you going to have marijuana illegally or legally? And so, I kind of got a sense of the council that you wish to have it done legally. I would say bring marijuana back under the law. And I will share with you a couple of times, in fact, as best I recall, there were four in which I was sentencing under 11550 of the Health and Safety Code. They were always young men for being under the influence of methamphetamine. And in the Superior Court, you have to give, it's called a factual basis. They have to put in their own words why they are guilty of the offense. And they all told me the same story, something similar to, "Your Honor, my drug of choice was marijuana and for years, I would buy my marijuana from the same supplier and one fine day, he sold me some marijuana unbeknownst to me, laced with methamphetamines. I smoked it and got hooked and this is how I am here." And I still remember thinking at the time, you know, my goodness, we all know smoking cigarettes is harmful for your health, not a good thing to do, but at least if you go to your local mini-mart and buy a pack of Marlboros, you're going to know it's not laced with methamphetamines. So that's a drug marijuana prohibition problem. So I commend to you, we have, if we have illegal marijuana shops here or anywhere else, for heaven's sakes, enforce the law. That's what I did as a judge and that's what I sense that you wish to do as well. But it can be done legally. It was done in many places, in Colorado, in Oakland, and in many, many other places. I just commend to you, you have your, your task force. Get as much information as you can. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are many, many places in which they're doing it and doing it well. Final two thoughts. I also speak for a group called LEAP, Law Enforcement Against Prohibition, which is a national speakers group of people like me, former chiefs of police, et cetera. And, and they all use their experience to recommend to you to bring these drugs back under the law, particularly marijuana. There is going to be the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. It is and will be on the ballot here in California this November. I support it. I hope you do as well, for exactly the same reasons. So this is something that we just need to look at. You do not see in Garden Grove High School or anywhere else, are young people selling alcohol, Jim Beam Bourbon, to each other. They could, but there's no money in it, but they're selling it, they're selling methamphetamines and marijuana and the rest all of the time because of the money. So we have this as a recruiting tool for numbers of juvenile street gangs. Most juvenile street gangs use the sale of illegal drugs to lure our kids into those. So all of these are issues that I know you are addressing. I commend you for this. Bring it under the law and thank you for the opportunity of sharing these thoughts with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Good morning, counsel, mayor, staff. My name is Randall Longwith. I'm an attorney here in Orange County. I represent many in the, in the medical marijuana industry. I am the attorney for the first legal medical marijuana clinic in Orange County. I represent many other clinics and legal marijuana businesses throughout the state. We worked very hard with the city of Santa Ana to put a, a, a policy in place to crack down on what was going on in Santa Ana. In Santa Ana, there were over 120 illegal dispensaries within that city. They put an ordinance in place. There are now 10 legal shops in there, on their way to be 20. The illegal shops now have gone from 120 down to approximately 13. 120 they started with. I'm doing the same thing right now in Costa Mesa, right? We put an initiative on the ballot in Costa Mesa, qualified it. It is, it will be on the November ballot. The city is now working with us in the city of Costa Mesa to come up with a comprehensive, comprehensive ordinance so that it works for everybody. Why? Because they recognize that there are illegal shops throughout Costa Mesa and they don't want that. They want to make sure that they can, like Judge Gray said, regulate it, take it out of the black market, make it safer. In Garden Grove, I am working with patients in Garden Grove on an initiative in this city. I would rather not do it. I would rather have you all do an ordinance so that you can put in there what you know is best for this city. I will ask you, and I'll ask you all, for your input if I have to do it. I don't want to do it. I think you all know what's going on in this city. I can tell you right now, I think somebody mentioned about 23, there are more than that in Garden Grove. I can tell you right now. It's needed in this city. You all are doing a fantastic job by at least looking in to this issue. It will be, if nothing else, on the ballot. And there's a problem with that as well, and I want you guys to understand, you all to understand. There is a taxation issue that is going to go along with this. There is something called Proposition 218 that may not allow you to get taxation after November, right? If you put an ordinance in place today and put a tax on the ballot by August 12th of this year, you can tax this industry. If you pass that, you have to wait until the next general election. It's unclear whether or not I, in an initiative, can tax this. So if I end up not making the signature requirement for the November ballot and it goes on a special election, that may be without a tax. I don't want that. If it's going to be in this city and it's going to be regulated in this city, you all deserve to have taxation out of that, just like any other industry in your city. I'm going to ask each and every one of you, including the staff, either to give me input as to what you all would like me to put inside of the initiative that I'm writing right now. I would rather that you all did it, but I can tell you right now, I'm writing it, it will be finished by the end of the week and ready to submit. So I'm imploring y'all to, to do exactly what you're doing, and you deserve to have the autonomy and the authority within your own city to do the thing that you all know, I hope you know, is the right thing. Thank you so much.
Justin Phan.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Justin Phan, I'm a Garden Grove resident. I'm not here to speak for or against cannabis tonight, I just really like to address the city council at just common sense approach. So the way I look at it is like when we all went through school, engineering or whatever, when I went through, I mean, all the schooling we did, after we're done, we out of school, really, the first job is like, well, great, now you got real life experience. So you go work and you learn that's from real life. Now, what we're asking here is the cannabis industry to Garden Grove, how we do it, and it's like whether we ban it or not ban it. The question I want to ask the council and the staff here tonight is, what exactly real life experience have each of you guys have? Have you guys visited Santa Ana, the legal and illegal shop, and see how they operate? I did. I visit the Garden Grove shops, I see what they do. I visit the illegal shop in Santa Ana, I see theirs, and I see the legal guys too. Right? This is what I can tell you. If you go down there and visit a legal shop, these guys worked hard to get their license. It's worth millions. In Colorado, one license now is worth 20 million. And down in Santa Ana, I heard is roughly about 45 million. If they don't comply by the law and regulation, guess what? They lose that $4 million license, plus the 5 or 10 million they invested into every single one of those dispensary, which is about 20,000 to 40,000 square feet. You do the math how much money they put in. You talk about loitering, it ain't there. Why would they, they have security guard walking around the facility 24/7, make sure there is no loitering. If there is, the city can come there and take that license. Investor lose their money, they lose their license, everybody loses. So the, all the issues I hear from the community is like, oh, there's loitering, oh, there's cash, how do you track that? I went down a legal dispensary, I saw how they do it. They accept master, Visa card, you name it. It's a point-of-sale system. It's there. They track it from Colorado, there's a system called BioTrack, it's from seed to sale. That's how Colorado was able to generate tractable income of a billion dollar last year. You know how many millions they got for their schools? I mean, here we sit here, you guys have a lot on your plate, show this to staff, I understand that. Right? To me is that we're about to make a decision, a very important decision for our city. Make the time to go actually see it firsthand, what is right and what is wrong, before you come with a conclusion, what is to do. All these things, I saw, we saw the community hall and all that stuff, it was politically motivated, and because there's an election coming. Right? So all that's coming, all the pressure, all the people coming out. Anyway, I digress. But the point is, I mean, you guys are going to make a very important decision for our city, the staff and yourself, spend the time to research into it. I mean, we're talking about, every city is waiting back to see every other city, what they're going to do before they reach out. Let me ask you something. As a young one growing up, what did we say? Early bird gets the worm. Right? So as I was doing community service in our city, I met mayor, before he even asked, I ran into the office, he took the time to meet with me because I said, "Mr. Mayor, we have, and I want to address our anti-bullying issues in our school district." And I sat and talked with him, he was gracious enough, he advised me, literally, he looked at me in the eye, he go, "Justin, we have no money in our school, in our, in our, in our city to do this." That's one. Right? So when I went, my daughter go to kindergarten school here in Gilbert, and I think in the next two chief strong stuff, that's cool there, I don't know, a couple hundred kids. We have one playground, a couple swings for all that kids. Right? And down in Fountain Valley, where my cousin live, they got, oh my God, huge. So if we do this right, just like Randall just spoke, look at the revenue we would generate for our city. I mean, as leaders, we put you guys here, we voted you guys here, you are the leader of our community, you lead us to the greener pasture. Do your time, do, put your due diligence, lead us to the green pasture. Don't let us lead you, meaning like you got special interest group or the community, "Oh, community is voting this way." Oh, tell me so I can go there and then do that thing. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before we take a really quick break, I want to give our council, my colleagues, an opportunity to respond, if you wish, to any of the previous public comments.
I don't, mayor, however, I think we have some folks here in the audience for 7C.
I'm going to call those folks up right before that item.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good. I didn't want to wait long.
All right, well, I do want to address, since the Medical Cannabis Task Force in our city is still ongoing, we will be scheduling some visits to some local and legal operators in, I don't know where we're going to go, but they're going to be local, and we're going to check them out. And, yeah, I think the information that we'll be gathering, we're going to come back and present it to our colleagues in a, in a future study session, so we can kind of flesh this I, I do hear that there is a sense of urgency, and I do understand that as well. We would have to approve a measure, if we want to, by August 9th is the last meeting. And certainly we would need to, you know, get it moving before that, if we were to decide. There's, there's been some very good points that have been brought up today regarding taxation, and, and if, if we don't put it on the ballot for November, then that's something that our city's going to miss the boat on. And certainly, you know, with, with Judge Jim Gray coming in and your expertise in, in the law, and, and in also sentencing youth, and I'm glad to know that there is a group called Law Enforcement Against Prohibition. I'm very happy to hear that. You know, this is, this is something that's currently in the law in California, that patients have a right to access. However, it's not safe in Garden Grove to access it, because it is in the black market. And, and so to, to me, as, as a Californian, I, I think that's, that's an injustice. However, we, we want to ensure safety, you know, that is our top priority. There's been a memo from our city manager after the last budget study session, that we're going to be adding two more police officers in addition to what the recommendation was. And that's direction from your city council, from us up here, and that will further put us into a deficit. It looked like almost a million or around a million dollars. Because we understand that public safety is our city's priority. And, you know, on, on, on that same note, that is why the cannabis task force formed, the Medical Marijuana Task Force formed, because we want to address those problems. We're very serious about addressing those problems, in consideration of our budget limitations in our city as well. So, to me, it's not necessarily a moral fight, whether this thing is good or bad, that's not what we're talking about. We already have the laws. We're talking about whether we want to move towards regulations, however, before we even do any of that, here's our opportunity for our city to consider a tax measure for the November ballot, which voters would decide. That's it. That doesn't mean that there would be a ban lifted. That doesn't mean that we would stop enforcing our laws. It doesn't mean that we would not continue to support our police officers and our department and our chief. That's not what that means. All we're considering is whether we want to move forward and put an item on the November ballot, and voters can say yes, tax, or no tax. There would not be regulations in place. It would just mean that the future council, not this council here, a future council with two additional council members, which would be elected on that same ballot in November, to decide. And of course, certainly, I imagine that those members of the, of the future council, the next council, will also take into consideration how voters voted on taxation. That's it. All these different things that we're bringing up is jumping ahead. We should be very careful and intentional, intentional about how we want to resolve this issue for our city. That's it. So, Mr. Beard, did you want to add anything?
Well, I, I have a question for the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, we're getting into this tit-for-tat, addressing audience members, and we're in oral communication. I just want to ask, since this was not a, a designated item for discussion on the agenda, is it appropriate to pontificate, bloviate, comment on, on things such as this in this stage? I, just a legal question related to the proceedings of the business of the council.
City council is not allowed to discuss items not on the agenda. City council can ask questions and ask staff to come back with information.
We can certainly respond to public comments.
Council can respond to comments as well.
Thank you. Mr. Beard, anything further?
No discussion on this item.
Thank you. All right. So I want to invite everybody here, we're actually, we're going to take a break, we're going to recess. And I want to invite everybody here to join us. We have a little bit of cake, it's a celebration for my birthday. And we're back. Thank you for the kind birthday wishes, everybody. Jim McNear.
Hello. I wasn't, I didn't come here to plan to talk and that, but with the medical marijuana issue that I have a suggestion that is why not, you heard of inner industry zones? Why not have a warehouse out in the western portion of Garden Grove? One big building with subdivisions with inside of it with all the pot, medical pot dispensaries and stuff like that? It could be regulated by a city or a police officer at the main gate and the main door to come into, to be able to go to the warehouse to the different vendors. That way, the city has control over it. It's out of the mainstream. It's, you know, in the warehouse area, but it'd be like an inner, you know, industry zone. That'd be one way to, you know, to regulate it, but yet still have it accessible.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. We are going to transition over to successor, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Winn?
Yes.
Member Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here.
So, we already did oral communication simultaneously with City Council. We'll move on to consent items. Do I have a motion?
Move the consent items.
Second. Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
No public hearings, no items. So, do we have any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we'll turn back to council.
Thank you. We have some consent items here for A. For M. Entertain a motion.
I'd like to pull for F, please, Mayor.
Sure. Is there a motion for the ballot?
I'll move the ballot.
Second.
Any further discussion? No? Give me one second. Okay. Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you.
And colleagues, on the matter of 4F, this is for disclosure purposes. I work closely with the phlebotomy, the California forensic phlebotomy here as a DA. We use their services when we do DUI testings and stuff like that. I don't think here has any, the issues of conflicts or anything. That's why I make sure that I ran that past our city attorney, but I don't think it's a conflict made to action on this issue.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't have any ownership interest in the company, then there wouldn't be a economic conflict.
And I do not.
Okay.
So, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Thank you. We have some public hearings tonight.
Yes, our first public hearing is adoption of resolutions for the street lighting districts and Garden Grove Park Maintenance. And Anna Neal is here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Baylor, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, the City Council is asked to hold public hearings for the city's street lighting and park maintenance districts and adopt resolutions for the collection of assessments for those districts. The public hearings are required by law, and their purpose is to hear testimony on the question of the annual assessments. Once the hearings are complete, the resolutions may be adopted. And should the resolutions pass, the required information will be forwarded to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. The assessments will raise approximately $1.3 million in street light revenue and $700,000 in park maintenance revenue. There are no increases in the assessment rates from the last fiscal year. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. So, we're going to open up the public hearing right now. Anybody who wishes to speak on this matter, please step forward, hearing and seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. And we have a few actions to take here and the recommendation. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Can we do them both at once, or do we got to do?
We can do all three.
All three at once. Okay. I'll move all three, 5A, B, and C.
Now, second, all three.
Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, thank you. So, that's 5A, B, and C. All right. Any?
Actually, that was just 5A.
That was just 5A. I was thinking about.
Yeah. Were we, were we?
Three recommendations.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay.
I crafted it wrong, so that should have just been 5A.
Okay. No worries. At this time, staff is going to speak to 5B.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tonight, we have the final step in establishing the annual assessment for the Main Street Assessment District for fiscal year 1617. The assessment remains the same from the previous year, and expenditures will also remain the same. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, the remaining action for City Council is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the assessments for the district. All information will be forwarded to the county assessor for collection of the assessments. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I'm going to open the public hearing for this item. Anyone wishing to speak on it? Seeing and hearing none? I'll close the public hearing.
I'll move 5B. Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Jones. Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, and 5C.
Yes, 5C is consideration of the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan.
Thank you.
And Bill Murray is here to give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Baylor, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. The California Department of Water Resources requires the city to update and adopt an urban water management plan every five years. The updated plan ensures the city will provide for future needs and will be prepared for water shortages, and that we will comply with all applicable laws and regulations. During the current drought, the city has met our mandated 20% water reduction, and we are currently on a path to meet all of our obligations that the state has placed on us. The adoption of this plan is one of those obligations. To adopt a plan, the City Council must first conduct a public hearing, then adopt the attached resolution, and finally, direct staff to submit the plan to the state. This concludes staff's report.
Are there any questions for staff? I'll open up the public hearing at this time. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move 5C.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Madam Clerk, did you want to read if there are any objections to those?
There were no objections to any of the previous items.
I didn't see anybody. Okay. Thank you. And moving on to 7A.
7A is award of a contract for the project number 7277, and Bill Murray is here to provide that report.
Thank you, Ms. Baylor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, the council is being asked to award a contract to RJ Noble for the reconstruction of Knott Street from Garden Grove Boulevard to Lamson Avenue, and a small portion of Valleyview Street from the SR 22 to Tiffany. The reconstruction of Knott Street will be done using full death reclamation with cement treatment. The process involves a slight cost savings over aggregate base, but with the addition of the cement, it will provide the strength that we need to ensure the road base for Knott is solid for the next 25 years. The roadwork will also include asphalt removal and paving, removal and replacement of failed sidewalk, curb and gutter, drive approaches, there's a bus pad as well, and excess ramps. I need to notify council and the public that while we will be doing our best to minimize the impact of traffic to the local community, we believe that this impact will be significant. Knott has a fair amount of traffic on it, and Pacifica High School is located at Lamson and Knott. We will be expediting the contract in the area of the high school to minimize the disruption of the school, and the work on Valleyview will be scheduled after Knott. In additional, in addition, we will be working with the local businesses to maintain access to their sites at all times. Staff received and opened four bids on May 31 of this year and determined that RJ Noble was the lowest responsible bidder. The winning bid was almost $2.1 million. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contract can begin work by the end of the month and should be complete by November of this year. And please keep in mind that includes the Valleyview portion of it. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with federal, Measure M2, and gas tax funds. This concludes staff's report. I'm available, should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have, have a few. How major this project compared to the one on Brookhurst Street?
Brookhurst is simply a wider street, but the process is the same.
Is there any possibility that we can do this in two phases, with one phase this year and one phase next year?
We will lose federal funding of an amount of a half a million dollars should we decide to split-phase it. In addition, we'd have to negotiate with a contractor for that delay.
Okay. My next concern is the segments that are close to the Pacifica. Is there any possibility that we can make sure that that is done first during the summer so that it will not impact the school as much during the school year?
That is our plan. We want to address the high school first. Matter of fact, we're actually partnering with them to do a little bit of a widening for their right-term pocket and driveway to make their access safer.
So, if we have some good luck with, if nature, mother nature cooperate, we should be able to finish this before, you know, before September or maybe before October?
Definitely.
Okay. Second question is the segment that we are doing in the remaining. Is there any possibility that we may cut, you know, much later into the holiday seasons?
Oh, you mean on Valleyview?
Yeah.
No, we'll be complete prior to the holidays.
All right. No more question.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing at this time? I'm sorry, there's no public hearing. I'll entertain a motion at this time?
Move to approve. Second.
All right, please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
All right. 7B.
7B is adoption of a resolution regarding the Garden Grove Tourism District Advisory Board, and Greg Bodgett is here to present that report.
Thank you, Kathy. I have a PowerPoint presentation to share.
7B.
Gigi Tid.
No. You're not. It's 7B. Kathy, does this work?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, we have a resolution approving the annual report of the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District Advisory Board declaring intent to levy assessments for fiscal year 2016-2017, the Garden Grove TID. And based on the advisory board report, we'll set a public hearing. So, within, actually, the slideshow's not going.
Okay, let's just have the audio version, please. Thank you.
The district includes Tier 1 and Tier 2, which Tier 1 is north of Lamson Avenue and is a 2.5 self-assessment of DOT, and then Tier 2 is south of Lamson Avenue, and that self-assessment is 0.5%. So, within the district, there's nine hotels, 10 hotels this year, including Great Wolf Lodge, so that's a new one that's in Tier 2. And within the district, it pays for marketing through the Visit Anaheim Convention Bureau, also to fund events, including the Strawberry Fest- Also, to fund events, including the Strawberry Festival, Chamber of Commerce, golf tournaments, OC Food Bank, American Lodging Investment Summit, and the twenty sixteen budget will have the similar tasks. Also, we have continued landscaping improvements along Harbor, new banners and street decor, resort signage, and also a private security system. The financial impact of the Garden Grove TID, it will not significantly incur direct costs as a result of this action, and it's estimated that the self-assessment will produce approximately three-point-three-eight million dollars for tourism efforts this year. Tonight, we have Jay Beris from the Anaheim Convention Bureau, Visit Anaheim. I'll also just say a couple of words about the Tourist Improvement District.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for the opportunity. We're in some great times in the tourism industry. I hope you see it all around you. It's very exciting. We have some slides up there, and we're happy to distribute to you at a later date, but we're really bringing in visitors from around the world. We work with Brand USA and bringing people from around the world to the United States. Next is Visit California and bringing them into California. Next, we want them into Orange County, and next it's into Anaheim and Garden Grove. And we're very excited at the numbers we're seeing, all the development that's going on, and thank you for your commitment to growing the destination. We'd mention the hotels that are part of it, but at the end of the day, when you look at the citywide conventions in addition to tourism that's coming into the city, when a citywide convention is at the convention center in Anaheim, the average daily occupancy rate is eight-point-four percent higher in Garden Grove than it is when citywide conventions are not at the convention center. We have a breakdown of what happens with each convention, but when you look at the average ADR, ADR is average daily rate, and it's eighteen dollars and seventy-three cents higher when a citywide convention is in town. That means more revenue for you, the city, and for all of us. Rev par, revenue per available room, is twenty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents higher when a citywide convention is here. Again, more money when the convention center is full. And the total revenue of the Garden Grove Hotels is eighty-two thousand dollars higher when a convention event is in town than when there is no citywide convention. So again, great benefits to the destination. The Partner Hotels in Garden Grove have been great partners in many different programs that we offer, from international missions to travel promotions within the region and the key drive markets. So your hotels have been great partners with our different programs, and we appreciate that and definitely value their support. Our financial information from the contributions from Garden Grove in combination with contributions of Anaheim and our partnerships was about a fifteen-million-dollar budget last year. Next year, we see with partnership dollars coming in for Garden Grove and with the, I guess with the TID collections, about a two-million-dollar contribution, which allows us to do more and more marketing, more sales, bringing in more clients, and more visitors to our region. Was released today, AAA announced that Los Angeles Anaheim region was a number-three destination in the United States, only behind Orlando and Seattle. Seattle surprised me a bit, but it was behind those two in the entire United States with AAA. So very excited about that. And your packet, which you'll get, lists some of our top feeder markets coming from Southern California, Northern California, and other Western states, as well as other countries, including Canada, Australia, Mexico, and the United Kingdom as our top feeder markets. Lastly, I mentioned the citywide conventions that come in, and we really have the convention center expansion going on, which will be completed in September of two thousand seventeen, allow for more conventions to come in, including the medical conventions, which really spend a higher rate, spend more money in the destination, and we're very excited about that. Last year, we were able to book forty-nine citywides for future years. Only three years ago, we were booking about thirty-eight citywide conventions for future years. So we're seeing the benefit of the development that you've been able to coordinate, as well as what's going on in our region. Over six-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand room nights and almost a million in attendance. Some of the great things also that is going on, we've been able to create a sports commission with Sports Anaheim that goes after the amateur sports market. That is the recession-proof market that is the fastest-growing market in the country with kids coming with their families to enjoy amateur sports. It's a growing market. It's so exciting to see what's going on in our region with that, and this city in particular is primed to take advantage of that. We also have what's called a customer advisory board, which is clients from around the country, major associations, major corporations who bring their meetings to different destinations. For the first time, we were able to host that at the Hyatt Regency Orange County and able to have our clients there at the hotel. Stephen, thank you. They did a fantastic job, and our clients are thrilled at what they saw here in Garden Grove and in our resort district. Having said that, we also have a plan in tracking some of the community give back. Many of the conventions that come in now give back to the community with a legacy program. Last year alone, we had over seven million dollars in cash, services, and programs given back to the community. Everything from a two-hundred-thousand-dollar check to the Alzheimer's Society, to food bank contributions. All of that's going on from the tourism industry, and it's great to see that give back. And we want people to recognize in the community that tourism is beyond that economic impact initially at hotels and attractions. It's beyond that. It's a community give back, and it makes us a better place. So thank you for your support of our efforts. Thank you for your contributions to making this a greater tourism destination. And you guys have really great meetings. I really like coming to these. So thank you very much, and thank you, Greg. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Colleagues? Is there a motion? I'd like to move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
All right. Seven C.
Seven C is approval of assignment of the Grow District Resort Hotel Development Agreement, and Greg Blodgett is here to present that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, we have a assumption agreement between Garden Grove Hotel District and Forsite C, which is Land and Design Incorporated, to Investel Garden Grove Resorts LLC, a joint venture with Land and Design. And this is for the Shanghai Group, which is SCG America. I'm just going to run through some of the highlights of SCG America as far as their development experience and why it's a good fit for this development. So SCG America recently has purchased the Hyatt Hotel. It's not showing up on the slide again, but anyway. The SCG America purchased the six-hundred-and-fifty-six-room Hyatt Orange County most recently and closed in record time with an all-cash transaction of a hundred-and-thirty-seven million dollars. And also, most recently, has purchased the Fandango's Restaurant and closed on the Fandango's Restaurant, which is adjacent to the Hyatt Hotel. So SCG is building new hotels and residential projects in both New York, Los Angeles, and Orange County. And notably, in New York, they're developing a couple of projects in Fleshy, New York, SCG Plaza One and Two, which are mixed-use hotel development projects, including residential hotel and commercial spaces in Fleshy, New York. They just opened a Hyatt Hotel in Fleshy, New York, which is very successful and incorporates retail dining and entertainment in the bottom floors. And if you could see the slide, it looks very great. Also, they're developing in Los Angeles. They just purchased a site at Broadway and Fourth, and they're developing luxury condominiums. They'll do a thirty-four-high-rise condominium building right on Broadway and Fourth Street, and this will be up to four-hundred-and-fifty new residential units in downtown Los Angeles. So SCG is a well-capitalized company with the wherewithal to complete our Site C development. They have an excellent track record with experience and expertise of new hotel development, and staff is recommending the resort hotel agreement with Land and Design be assigned from Land and Design to SCG America. So staff is recommending the city take the following actions, and that would be approve the assignment agreement of Grow District Hotel Agreement from Land and Design to Investel Garden Resorts LLC pursuant to the attached assignment agreement, and authorize the city manager to execute the consent of the city to the assignment of the city's behalf. Also authorize the city manager to amend the hotel agreement on behalf of the city as specified in the attached letter agreement. We do have representatives from Shanghai Group here that have flown in for this item. So we have a whole group from Shanghai. If you could raise your hand, we can see in the audience. And we'd like them to come up and say a couple of words.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can maybe add a few remarks as the SCG America team comes forward to present, share a brief comments to the council. For SCG America, they have their development pipeline right now in New York and in Los Angeles, and for Orange County, Garden Grove will be their home base. They are growing their platform of their hospitality expansion opportunities and have chosen our community to invest and grow. So we're certainly pleased to have their CEO and President of SCG America, Mr. Winford Zhang, to share a few comments and highlight some of their accomplishments as well. Again, I would like to introduce Mr. Zhang to the mayor and council. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council member. It's really exciting that I have this opportunity today here to represent SCG, one of the largest construction companies, to have this kind of the really good opportunity to work for the city and work for the community. Last year, we make a really solid footprint in Garden Grove. So we got a project... We got a really nice hotel. Steve worked with us pretty good and make really the performance to showing this pretty strong market in Garden Grove. And we believe that SCG America, we're going to bring the twenty-five-years experience in the United States. We're going to make a really successful, exciting project and working for the community as well. So SCG, we are not only the... As a foreign company, you know, because the name of... And we're afraid of from Shanghai as well. We are here this more than twenty-five years, and we have a local expertise. So I believe that in... Work with the city together and support with the city, this project will be really successful and a really fantastic project in Garden Grove. So I'm pretty confident of that, and I'm willing to get full support from the city. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
If I may just also add some clarification for the action for your consideration tonight. It is your authorization to approve the assignment and assumption agreement to establish the joint venture partnership with SCG America and Land and Design. In addition, the existing agreement provides for the city manager to make some modification to the schedule of performance. For your information, the target start of construction date is eighteen months from the execution of the assignment and assumption agreement. Our goal in terms of a comparison with the existing schedule of performance is an adjustment of approximately seven months. We are providing that additional timeline for SCG America to finalize their negotiations with the hotel franchise that would anchor the property. And we're excited to work with SCG America and make that announcement in the next ninety days. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So it looks like this agreement has been in place since April ninth, two thousand thirteen? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
When did council approve this initially?
April ninth, two thousand thirteen.
Okay, April ninth.
April ninth of what year?
Two thousand thirteen. So I don't see a signature on here from the previous mayor. On page forty-nine? But what I do see in this agreement that concerns me greatly is on page forty under four oh eight. Could you explain to the public what are these rebate payments? What is this, and what exactly is this?
In two thousand thirteen, when the City Council approved this agreement, it provided for certain tax incentives to the developer upon completion of certain phases of the project. A breakdown of those incentive is in three components. The original anchor hotel, which is the upscale hotel, would provide for an incentive of up to sixty percent of the bed tax that would be created as a result of the completion of the project. In addition, there are some additional retail and restaurant ancillary uses that would support that upscale hotel, and that would provide for additional fifty percent of sales tax rebate upon the opening of those uses. Combined, the term of that provision would extend approximately twenty years. The second component is the entitlements for the project provides for two additional hotels, and that assistance is approximately fifty percent of the bed tax over a ten-year period. The third component is roughly... Let me see. I'm trying to find my notes. Is, in addition to the completion of the proposed three hotels that would be contemplated for the development, there are some additional restaurant pad and retail opportunities on the property. If that is completed and open, that also affords the developer approximately fifty percent of the sales tax that would be generated from the site, and that provision provides for a twenty-year assistance period.
How do we justify that? What is the reasoning or the logic behind this rebate? And we're taxing folks who come to visit and stay in the hotels. And then here, it says for twenty years, we'll return sixty percent of that tax to the developer. Am I reading that correctly? That's what it says. How do we justify that?
That is correct, Mayor. I am going to ask Mr. Blodgett to provide some additional information. At the time, the City Council considered this two thousand thirteen agreement. It replaced an existing redevelopment agreement that the State Department of Finance had deemed not enforceable. So at the time, a supplemental agreement was brought in place to allow this project to go forward. So the components of the tax incentive that was introduced, I believe mirrored that assistance package that was originally provided for. So I'm certain Mr. Blodgett can provide additional detail to you, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So there's a reuse report that's attached to the agreement done by Horwath, which is the city's consultant. And on page eleven, they actually came up with some assumptions and conclusions based on the market value of the project. So they found that the project construction in relation to the project market value to be a negative reuse value of thirty-one-point-five million dollars. So these assistance payments for the project that come from the TOT are to fill that developers' gap, which is the thirty-one-point-five million dollars. And this was a study that was done by our consultant and conclusions, and also voted on by our City Council in this agreement.
Okay. Since it was voted on by City Council in two thousand thirteen, what happened? I mean, this is here in front of us.
Mr. Mayor...
I'm a little confused. I'm sure, you know, I just want clarification on this.
So what we're doing here is it's an assignment agreement for the original entitlement holder with Land and Design to partner with SCG America to do that. So that's why we're bringing this back before you. It's a requirement so we can move forward with the project.
Any further comments while I try to organize this? Seems to be out of order here. No?
I... You know, what I am so perplexed is that I was not involved in the original negotiation and approval... Well, not negotiation, but the approval of this project.
negotiation and approval, not negotiation, but the, the approval of this project. So giving me this agreement at the last minute, just before the council meeting, does not allow me to have the time to study and understand this, this agreement. It makes me feel very uncomfortable to, you know, move forward to vote one way or the other because, you know, this, certainly this is a, this is a complex project and there's an agreement that mean a great deal to the resident of Garden Grove. Over the last years and a half, many residents have come to this council and complained about, you know, we are given too much incentive to, to some developers. Now, I do not know whether their assessment is, you know, is well, well rational or not, but I don't have the information to allow me to choose one way or the other. And if you ask me to, to vote tonight on this, on this agreement that commits the city of Garden Grove to this project, it makes me very nervous because I, I don't have enough time to, to study it. I, I would hope that, that we would, you know, give us more time so we can understand it, study it, and make the sound decision. Certainly, my colleagues have been around, you know, during the 2012, 2013, so they have more information and they would be, it would be easier for them to, to make the decision. But for me, this is just landed on my lap, you know, tonight. How could you expect us to, to make the decision that quick?
Councilman Bowie, if I could just add a couple of points. So the original components in terms of this agreement haven't changed from the very beginning. It's the exact, for the most part, same agreement unless, you know, I'm, you know, somebody advised me different, that we've always been proceeding down the path to doing this particular project. What we're trying, what we're doing today is asking for approval for an assignment for the original entitlement older, owner, Land and Design to partner with SCG America. So the tip of, so again, the original components that have always been in place have not changed. It's, it's, it's the same project that it's always been. From our standpoint, we feel that this is going to allow us to move forward with the project. It's the next step of the project. Now, there's a number of other things that have to come along down the road that we'll be coming back to you on. The, the two parties have to work through the financing agreements. There's things that councilman you and I spoke about earlier about signage and packages and all that stuff that has to come forward as well. But this is, this is the assignment agreement. It's trying to keep the project on, on schedule, on track. And I know the two parties, and, and we do apologize for getting this to you so late. The two parties have been working amongst themselves very diligently, but they've been under the gun to kind of work through their own legal work that they have to do as part of this assignment agreement. So I know it's been, we've all been trying to move this along and so this is, this is a way for us to keep the project on schedule.
Yeah, if I may add, we are not asking the city council to approve the agreement. The agreement is in place, was approved in 2013. We're not asking for the council to approve any changes to the agreement. The agreement already authorizes the city manager to agree to certain adjustments within the agreement, like for example, the adjustment on, on the scheduled performance. Under section 103 of the agreement, page, starting on page 16 of the agreement, it provides that if the original developer is going to transfer its interest in this agreement to another party, it needs the city's consent. So the only issue before the council today is to approve the transfer of the original developer, the original agreement party to this new group. So that's why we're before the city council, simply to approve the assignment. And staff is recommended that the city council approve the assignment because the new developer has been vetted, they have sufficient financial capacity and experience to complete the project that stipulated to in the agreement. We're not asking for any other changes. So we're solely before you to approve an assignment pursuant to the terms of the agreement itself.
Yeah.
Can you clarify on the second recommendation? Authorize the city manager to amend the agreement on behalf of the city, especially in the attached letter agreement?
Yeah, so the letter agreement merely restates that the city manager already has authority under the agreement to approve to minor changes, including adjustment to the scheduled performance. So if there's, there were to be major changes to the terms of the agreement, we would have to bring it back to city council. But if there are minor changes, for example, an extension of time on completing construction, those changes, the city manager has already been authorized to do.
And the reason why it's here before us tonight is because there is a major change and it does, it's also a stipulation within the existing agreement that come before the council due to this major change.
And the major change is that we're getting a new developer.
Right.
We're replacing the prior developer with this new developer.
So what happened? What happened with the old developer?
If I may add, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Matt Reed with Land and Design is still involved with the project. We are adding a joint venture partnership, which provides for the construction and the financing partner to complete the project. So the original developer still has a development interest in the property. We are now adding an additional investor to the project to allow for the construction financing to complete the project.
Two more question.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just add real quickly, so, you know, Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed from Land and Design is here in the room today, in the front row there, working in partnership with SCG America. So that, that's the partnership that's in place.
Assuming that we vote yes to authorize this and assuming that for some reason, right, unforeseeable reasons, that the partnership, you know, broke apart, is the time extension would be, would stay and would transfer to other developers or how does that work?
Well, there could be a request to do another transfer. The city council would be asked to approve that in any event where there would be addition or a new developer to be part of the agreement.
The original contract or agreement between Land and Design and the city is that this project have to break ground by the end of 2017. Is that correct?
The original agreement or the?
Original.
The original agreement is that we, this project will have to break ground at the end, by the end of 2017.
I believe the current schedule provides for the start of construction by May of 2017. The extension that we are requesting the city manager authorization for is to provide for the start of construction date to be January 2018.
If the agreement between Land and Design and SCG?
SCG.
SCG fall apart, will we stick back to the original agreement that, that have to, how does that work?
Well, we, we have confirmation and this is why you didn't get the assignment documentation until before the meeting. We have the agreement between the two parties where they've already agreed on the partnership. We were, we wanted to present to the city council signed documents and that's why we couldn't provide you the documents until before the meeting this evening. So that transaction has already occurred.
Okay. Last question. I remember sometime last year, there is a question about some of the issue with the design, particularly a huge, you know, leaderboard sign on the side of the, of one of the building. And at that time, there was question about whether that is already a, you know, obligated agreement by the city and Land and Design. Is that still the case? Because that question has never been, has never been addressed.
Councilman Bowie, let me just a couple of comments or two and then maybe the city attorney wants to weigh in. But back at that time, first of all, SCG was not involved in discussions with Land and Design. So I, I know they're still going through, you know, all of the work that they have to do with, with the architectural renderings and the sighting of the, the locations and everything that goes into it. So my suspicion is they're still, they haven't, you know, worked through all that yet and just like any development that comes forward, they'll be coming to us with a signage package and, you know, we'll have to vet that and bring that through the, the urban design review of, of that particular project. So I think that is yet to come. Maybe the city attorney has something to add to that.
That's correct. They have to submit plans and.
I, I just want to, to feel reasonably okay that they are not going to expect that, you know, for example, last year, Land and Design told us that, no, you cannot do that. You have to allow us to put the huge leaderboard sign on the side of the, one of the hotel. And that is a agreement between the city manager and Land and Design on behalf of our city. I just want to make sure that we are not being held hostage to that, to that demand.
Well, I can tell you that if they submit plans that comply with our current development standards, they'll be, they'll, they'll be issued building permits. To the extent that they want to deviate from our current development standards, they'll have to make an application and it will have to go through planning commission and city council.
I remember this because this is a concern that I have, that we are, at that time, we, in the plan, in the design, we are talking about a three or four-story high leaderboard on the side of the hotel, very, very big. And so when I raised that issue, I was told by Land and Design that you, you, that is not a negotiable option. The city already give us the agreement to put that up there. And so I want to make sure, and, and, and when, when I heard that, I did ask staff to look into it and give me an answer whether we are legally obligated to allow them to put that huge, you know, sign on the, on the side of the hotel. So I want to make sure that by authorize this today, we are not complying to that, you know, agreement.
Yeah, the item before you today has nothing to do with design and construction. It has everything to do with approval of a new developer to be part of the team to finish the project or to finish, you know, the drawings submitted to the city and moving the project along.
Councilman, I don't know if Mr. Reed, he may have a comment or two if you'd like to entertain something from him, if you'd like to speak to that.
Hi, good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, happy birthday. With respect to your comments, sir, nothing formal has been submitted. And so we have not made any formal submittals. And, you know, though all of those discussions are, I think, will be worked through with, with staff. But I, if, if an ultimatum was presented to you, that certainly was not, that was not the case, at least from our perspective. We want to build a high-quality development with SCG. We want it to be a benefit to the community, not a burden to the community. And, and I think SCG shares those same visions for what's going to happen. And quite frankly, I believe SCG is going above the, the visions that we've initially talked about. But I don't believe that SCG, and they are our financial partner on the project. And, and like you said, nothing is being asked of you that hasn't already been pre-approved. There are no changes to the, to the agreement that are substantive or material.
Thank you. Thank you. So from my understanding, the reason why this is coming back to council is because there has been a change, like Mr. Sandoval said, in the partner, the developer, right? So that's why it's in front of us tonight. And this agreement was signed in 2013 and I think, you know, quite a bit of time has come by. And right here, I'm reading the fiscal impact report, saying that there's no direct financial impact to the city in conjunction with the assignment and that it's anticipated that it will generate 3.8 to 4.9 million annual tax revenue to the city. Is that calculation prior or after these terms in section 408?
Those, those are gross revenues.
Okay.
And those were also determined back at that date in time.
Okay, so gross revenues, I, I don't think that's really fair because you're not giving me the right information. Here, I'm reading that the city shall pay developer annually from the date on which completion of construction of each hotel occurs for a period of 20 years thereafter, an amount equal to 60% of the transit occupancy tax revenues, 60%, which have been paid to and received by the city in each calendar year. So we're collecting the TOT, which voters have voted on, and now we're going to hand that over each year for 20 years. And there's more, 50% of sales tax revenues as well. And then there's more. So could we change these terms since it's coming back to us at this time? Mr. Sandoval.
That item was not before you. And, and the current agreement, it's an obligation between the parties we've already agreed to. The, the assignment language does not stipulate that the city council would have the authority to put conditions on the assignment.
I hear you. Fact of the matter is, there has been a change and it's before us tonight. Right before the meeting, we got this packet and.
The, the agreement can be changed with mutual consent.
The agreement could be changed. Okay. So why don't we ask the folks from Land and Design to step forward? Would you be amenable to a different agreement?
Does that need to be answered by me? The 90-10, we are signing 90% of the project to SCG. We are retaining 10% that is allowed in the agreement. And no, we will not consider any amendment to the tax incentive.
And Mr. Mayor, let me, you know, let me just add this.
I'm just, you know, really surprised that this actually went through our council in 2013. I can definitely understand why the public has been so upset in our city.
Mr. Mayor, members, council, if I can just add, this is, you know, it's the original agreement that we entered into in good faith with the developers. We should all also remember, we fought a battle with the Department of Finance to try and make sure that we captured all of the revenue that came back to, that should, we thought should have come back to us. And so I don't think we are going to realize quite all of what we were hoping would come to us under the old development agreement, redevelopment agency days. So, I mean, at the end of the day, we still think this is a good deal for the city of, for the city of Garden Grove to help us kind of move, keep the momentum going. It's going to create a lot of jobs for our residents in the community and it will really help keep some of the momentum going as we're trying to build a transportation system, a modern streetcar system to come up, you know, through our city, continue to bring development. As you know, we're looking at some, or really some interesting developments now south of the 22 freeway. So we're trying to kind of build on that momentum. And, you know, you look at some other cities and we're trying to be competitive with all of the folks around us in terms of the development that we're trying to get done.
Thank you. You know, I, I hear that. Based on what I've heard, this approximate tax revenue, 3.8, let's say it's 3.8 on the lower end, we'd have to give more than half of it for 20 years. We'll be ending up with just a little bit over a million dollars annually if it's on the low end. And then let's talk about the impact to our city in terms of public safety needs to service the area, traffic, the impact on our roads, the impact to our community in general. I mean, these are things folks. I mean, these are things folks, the public brought these things forward. And, and I, I just don't feel comfortable with us getting this last minute. And I agree with Councilmember Bowie, you know, it's, this is not right that you're asking us to approve this.
I would like to see this move forward and be successful because I think this is a great vision for our city. However, I, I feel very uncomfortable, even though I understand that this is the existing agreement that we, that the previous council already put gas on. However, we have the choice to either, you know, approve the change of assignment or not approve it. Just like Land and Design have the choice of whether to amend the, you know, condition of the agreement or not amend the condition of agreement in term of, you know, sharing the TOT tax. Now, the reason I feel not comfortable to make that decision tonight is I was given this at the last minute. And I had the choice to either approve this or not approving it. So the choice is, is with me for, to make that decision. The resident need to understand this and, and give their input. And they are not allowed to because when they look at the, at the agenda, at the material that had been mailed out to them last week.
It says nothing.
It said nothing. So they do not know whether they need to understand and come here to, you know, to give their input, whether for it or against it. And for that reason, I, I would, I would think we need to wait on this.
I absolutely agree.
I want to hear from the, from the resident before I, before I cast my vote. And I, I need to understand this, this more before I can authorize or not authorize to move forward.
So, you know, I, I will, there hasn't been a motion at all. But I know that, you know, it looks like you have something to say, Mr. Jones. I would like to hear from other colleagues. You've only heard from Councilmember Bowie and myself. Mr. Jones?
Can we speak? That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'd like to take a different spin on this. I've been involved in this project for, since the very beginning. And I cannot tell you how thrilled I am to see us finally at this point in time. I want to genuinely commend Land and Design for all their hard work and diligent effort over a number of years and over a number of obstacles through a major worldwide economic downturn through the abolishment of redevelopment that we stuck together as a team with the redevelopment agency and then the successor agency and then the city ultimately to bring this about. So I'm absolutely thrilled to see this project go forward. This will be the single largest project the city has ever seen. This will blow the doors off of what we just experienced with the Great Wolf Lodge opening, which was spectacular. By comparison, the Great Wolf Lodge was $285 million project. I believe this is $370 million. Once we get farther along and people see how fabulous this is going to be, it's, it's just going to blow the doors off of pretty much anything we've ever seen in Garden Grove. So I am absolutely thrilled. I want to thank Matt Reed and team, Dave, for taking this down the road, moving the ball down the field as many years as you did with the diligent effort. And then I also want to thank SCG for coming in and making this huge capital investment in our wonderful city. So starting with the acquisition of the Hyatt and now proceeding into a second project very shortly thereafter, that's amazing. We, we welcome you with open arms. I welcome you with open arms. And I'm excited that we have a very credible developer with the balance sheet to be able to take down the financing and do this project. So I could not possibly be more thrilled to see this go forward. In my opinion, it's a complicated agreement that was already approved several years ago and a complicated sort of comprehensive plan, package that is already in place. But the item in front of us tonight is a simple assignment for the purpose of allowing the project to become financeable and under construction. So I could not be any more supportive. I'm absolutely thrilled. I can't wait to see this come about. This will be a great thing for the future of our city and its residents. And I hope we can move forward on this tonight. Without further ado, I think Winford Zhang himself and his team from, traveling from Shanghai to come be here in person. And I, I would really hate to delay this and make them have to come back or contemplate that. So I would, I would love to make a motion to approve the assignment of this agreement.
And I'll second that.
I would like to make an alternate motion to delay this to, for, to the next council meetings for following reason. We haven't heard, well, you three have already been familiar with this, with this project when you approved this in 2013. I have not. And so I, I would like to have an opportunity to study this more carefully before I cast my vote. And also the residents, you have heard throughout the years, they have often come to this council and complaining about we are giving a lot more than we should. Now, I, I really appreciate SCG for coming here and take on this two big project. And I, I would like you to continue to, to invest in this project. But give us an opportunity to, to understand this before we, we can vote on, on it. Certainly waiting two weeks is not a big, big deal, especially when the city council is willing to extend the schedule to accommodate it. The residents, this council have heard them often coming to this, this council to express their first question. They need to give their input before we can vote on it. I do not feel comfortable that this council voting before the resident allowed to study it and, and give their voice. So all we are asking is give us two weeks. It does not necessarily mean that I, I, I do not support this project. I just need to have time to study it. And, and the resident need to give their input. And, and then we will vote on, in two weeks.
Just to clarify, have we had a chance for public input on this agreement in the past?
In 2013, right?
We did.
Correct?
So.
In 2013.
So the only thing that is on the table for us right now is to decide if we wish to take on a very well-funded partner for Land and Design. I don't think anyone in their right mind would say no to that.
Councilman Fan, but that's three years ago. Thing may change, condition may change, people input may, people preference may change. What someone agreed to three years from now might not be the same. What I think today may be different what I think three years from now. And so just because they have given their input and just because we voted yes on it three years ago, does not necessarily mean that we want to vote yes again today. So I think they deserve the right to be, you know, to voice their concern. And I, I could not imagine how we vote on this without giving the resident an opportunity to, to comment, especially when this item was not given to them, you know, before the, you know, with the timeframe that they are allotted to.
That's right. Nor to us, for that matter. I mean, as mayor, I just saw this.
We cannot just, our city cannot just rush into a, a big project, a huge project like this at the last minute. That, that's not how we, we do business.
It's not transparent. Not even to us, it wasn't.
And brother fat, if I may, you know, I've always been commenting with you on extending lines and timelines and stuff like that. But this document has not been a mystery to any one of us. You have gone, could have gone to the, the city manager at any point and say, let me see what you have on file since 2013 or since you came on board to this council. So to say that this just came out of nowhere, out of thin air is, is not right. So just because we got last minute here before the council meeting, doesn't mean that you haven't had, not had a chance to review it way, way before this came before us.
Councilman Fan, the city office did not alert us to this, to this agreement at all. All I was asked is to vote on assignment for, you know, to add another party into the agreement. And, you know, with all right, I, I, I should be alerted to this and I was not. That really violated my right as, as a city council here.
So are they saying, are you saying that they're trying to hide the ball from you?
No, I didn't say that. I said I have the right to get this document before, before that and during my agenda review. And I did not get that chance. And so I asserted my right to, to study this before, before I vote on it. If you force me to vote now, I would have to vote, I, I would have to abstain. Because I do not know whether I should vote yes or should I vote no.
You know, I think you bring up a very good point, Mr. Bowie. I'd like to ask legal counsel your opinion on whether you think it's sufficient time for us to review the material here if we got it right when the meeting started? And if that's really how cities should be conducting business?
Well, the second question is a policy question. So I don't really have a comment on that. In terms of the sufficiency, the assignment, I mean, it was already part of the agreement. The, the only issue is whether you had enough time to review the information pertaining to the new partner.
That's a key part of it. That changes everything, which you not agree?
Yeah, but Mr. Omar, the, the point here is I do have the right, this city council have the right to vote no and not allow the change of partnership because of something that we do not like in the, in the agreement. We have that right, right? And I do not have enough information to, to, to tell me whether should I vote yes to allow the assignment or vote no and stick to the original partners and the, and the original agreement. I have the right to do that.
So the city council has a right to deny the request. So.
But I don't.
In terms of what, you know, what is sufficient time, I think that you are the judge as to what is sufficient time to provide you with the information.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, at this point, let me express my frustration. Let me also express my disappointment in city staff for not bringing this forward to us earlier. This is not how we should be doing business in our city. This is not how city councils should be communicated with. I, I feel that, you know, we didn't get the full picture. And I'm highly disappointed and frustrated. This is not okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond, obviously, we want to work as hard as we can to give you all the information that you can get as soon as possible. Again, one of the limitations that we were up against as a staff was not to keep this information from you. In fact, we wanted to get it out sooner. And as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, the two parties, both Land and Design and SCG, were working furiously, from what I can tell, on their own legal matters, trying to tie up some loose ends on trying to get this assignment together. Literally, you know, they were working on it, you know, within the last 24 hours to get it finalized. We wanted to get at least the title agendized to you. I know we did some briefings and some introductions to you with SCG. But obviously, we didn't get a chance to talk about the specifics at that time because, you know, the, the documents weren't ready. So, you know, we, you know, certainly it wasn't our intention to bring this in at the last minute. We always try to make sure we get as much information to you as quickly as possible. So I understand how, you know, the disappointment. You know, we're always going to continue to work to get information to you as quickly as we can.
Look, this document, this agreement, like Mr. Fan said, it's been in place since 2013. And we weren't given even that document that wasn't being worked on. The document, which is the contract with the recitals and its impact to our city. And the reason why it's ahead of us today is because of that existing agreement that's been signed by our city with the parties. The reason why this item is on the agenda is because of that. And we didn't even have that until tonight. And then Mr. Fan is saying that, hey, you could have asked for it. Well, I'll tell you. Item 7C. Subject: Approval of Assignment of Grove District Resort Hotel Development Agreement, Site C, from Land and Design Inc. to Investel Garden Resorts LLC, Action Item. Doesn't even tell me a thing about that agreement. That's negligence.
Well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far to make that assumption. But, but, but here's what I'm frustrated with. If we are not ready, then don't bring this to the council, period. If we are not ready to vote on it now, then we should not vote on it. We cannot just at the last minute throw, throw out on, on the city council, hey, by the way, we are working out, well, we are working very hard to get this thing for you. And sorry, here's a last minute item. Please vote on it. We cannot do, we cannot do business like that, Mr. Mayor.
You know, you.
If we are not ready, then put this on the council agenda for the next meeting.
Have a question.
Sure, Mr. Beer.
We had a motion of second and we had a offering up of a substitute motion. Was there a second to that motion? I didn't hear it. So did that motion die?
Well, we was discussing. So is there a second motion, a second to that?
I'll, I'll second, I'll second your substitute motion. What I haven't heard is actually deliberation from you, Mr. Beer. Would you like to contribute?
Well, I, I would like to talk to the main motion, but I'll speak to substitute motion. I'm going to vote against it. I think I'm ready to vote for it tonight. I do have the benefit and the experience of seeing the previous agreement. Unfortunately, you don't. But I think it's overall, speaking of the original motion, it's a, it's a good agreement. It's a good deal for the city. The investment of this new partner, so to speak, is worthwhile to the city. It's a win-win situation. So overall, that is a perfect, that is the right area for this project. It's been in the works for quite a while and the agreement still stands from 2013. So this is just, as they say, the transference of adding basically a financial well with all partner to make this happen. So based on my experience, I'm ready to vote on it tonight. So I will vote against the substitute motion to delay it two weeks and just go forward with the original motion.
Councilman Beer, with all respect, I, I, I understand that you are ready to vote on it. And you've been at the city council in 2013 when this thing come before you. So you, 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 you have all the information. But with, with all respect, I, what I'm asking for is, I'm the new council member. I'm new to this. And, and this information done on my lap right at this meeting. I have not had time to even read through it. How could you expect me to read through this thick document in, in a few minutes and vote yes or vote no? So, so what I'm asking is do not deny my rights to vote on, to study this and vote on this issue. Now, I, I probably will be, after reading this, I will probably vote yes for it. But I need to understand it before I can cast my vote. If you force me to vote now, there's, I have no ground to base my decision on. You have a lot of information, but I don't. Because I was never given this, this information ahead of time.
Then your option is abstain if you don't feel you have enough information.
Okay.
With the, yeah, okay. I, I suggest we move forward on the vote.
Yep. There's further discussion here. I'll, I'll jump in here. What, what we're doing, if we move forward with this, I think it's a, a big turn in, in direction in terms of what the voter's intent was when voters approved TOT. I, I'm not so sure that voters wanted to allow councils to, to use that as a certain leverage for certain agreements like this. I, I'm not sure how transparent this was in 2013. Certainly does not appear transparent tonight, in 2016, at least for myself and for Councilmember Bowie and for the, the public that probably would be interested in commenting on this issue. I do support that we give more time and we should hear from people. At least give us time to review this very thick document. If this is what you're giving us, this is what we need to consider. And really, there, there's no way you can expect us to consider all this so quickly. So on that alone, I, I do urge all my colleagues to support the motion to continue this for the next meeting. I do appreciate folks traveling in. We have. I do appreciate folks traveling in. We have great hotels for you to stay at and enjoy the resort area. But we do need to have a, a process here. And at least Councilmember Buie and myself have been denied of that. And we're elected members representing the public. Mr. Jones.
Thank you. I would just close my comments by saying I think none of this is new information. Close to 20 years ago, this city had a great forward-looking vision to capitalize on the positive externalities created by being a city adjacent to Disneyland and its natural, what is it now, 27 million tourists that come through this area every year? And being very proactive from a redevelopment standpoint on hotels and hospitality uses along the Harbor Boulevard corridor between the border of Anaheim and the 22 freeway. This has proved to be remarkably successful for this city. I would say our residents must be thrilled that for a city that has a $100 million top line budget, that 20 million of that now comes from hotel tax revenue, meaning people from outside of our city come in and give us $20 million into our general fund every year, 20% of our top line. And as these past agreements expire on the sharing agreements with developers on past projects, that number will go up because of Great Wolf. That number will go up within the next year or two. As these deals go forward, we'll realize fabulous, I think our public safety would love to have another million or 2 million a year coming forward on this now rather than later. And as this deal expires exponentially, the city's deal will go up. This is a gift that we'll keep on giving. It's an, an annuity over all time that's inflation adjusted. The hospitality industry is on fire. Now is the time to strike and move forward on this. And as I said before, I couldn't be more thrilled and I would say that the majority of our residents who understand how this works could not possibly be more thrilled that we're adding more of this type of use and more hotel tax revenue to the city's general fund.
So this, this waiting period is, is more than 20 years. And the $20 million is not accurate. You're saying gross receipts earlier, Mr. Blodgett, right? So this, this is very problematic. Also, the benefit to the public, based on just this report for this particular item, 3.8 on the low end and with 60% of it for the next 20 years, et cetera, that's about a million dollars or so, give or take, on the low end. And this very council decided in the budget study session that we had last week to be okay with a further increase to our deficit. And, and you're telling me it's okay to, to have this particular agreement, which is a subsidy agreement? And having what I imagine voters in Garden Grove and residents in Garden Grove, whether they voted or not, that they expected the full revenue return for what they voted on? We, we justified. I, I remember that when we rationalized and we campaigned for it, we were telling people in Garden Grove that this will increase and, and help our city. But from what I'm hearing is that we just agreed to go into a further increased deficit than what was the original budget that was presented to us. And now we're okay with this particular agreement that was signed in 2013? And we're just going to say, okay, since Mr. Matt Reed standing there says, oh, we're, we're not going to renegotiate. Well, really, that's just like that. And, and folks flying in from Shanghai and to Garden Grove and we're saying, they're here, they're here, we must pass this now. Come on. I don't buy it.
Just to, just to clarify, one point is that we, in the budget discussion last meeting, we actually will be reducing the budget. We'll still have a structural budget deficit, but we're reducing it from 5.6 to about 4.5 or something. So we're heading in the right direction. We're not
Okay, let's be clear.
Actually, we're not, we're not increasing
We need, we need 20 more, we need 20 more police officer. And we're only adding five. So we are a long way from, from hitting our target. But let me, let me, let me ask you this. Let, let not, let not talk about that, that number for now. Because, you know, we could be on different, you know, it's all over the map if we talk number now. What I do not understand is this project had been delayed, had been working on for years since 2013. Why not allow two more weeks so that we, we can understand it, so the public can understand it? Why suddenly rush at the last minute, throw this out, rush, 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 let's vote on it today? I do not understand that. We certainly can wait another two weeks. I'm not asking for a delay for a month or two months or three months. I'm only asking for two weeks on a project that had been delayed for years. So that I can understand. And I, I, you may be right, Councilman Jones, that, that the resident may still would like to move forward with this, but I want to hear from them. Maybe they changed their mind. Over, over the last couple of years, we have heard many allegations that we have, some of these deals maybe done in such a passion that they was wondering if, if we are not transparent, if there's something going on behind the closed door. Now is an opportunity for us to be transparent, let the public look at that and, and let the, all of the council member have a chance to study it before we vote. I'm not asking for a lot of times. I'm only asking for two weeks. There's nothing that are so demanding that we have to vote on this today, otherwise the project will, will go into limbo. So why cannot wait two weeks to give us a time, give the residents a time to understand it? And maybe they will, will jump in and they say, hooray, you guys are wonderful, let, let move forward with this. But at least give them that opportunity to speak up. We should not deny them that opportunity. You should not deny me the time to understand this before I, I cast my vote.
I agree. I agree.
Let me ask staff.
Can I answer that real quick?
I'm sorry.
Just my perception on this is that although we've had comments that are all over the board and off-target with respect to what the agenda item is before us, that this is a simple assignment agreement. And I personally feel it would be unreasonable to deny the assignment from the original developer, Land and Design, to a partnership agreement with a hugely credible, number one construction company in the world to come in and back this and take this forward as already approved. So to me, all the other stuff is already approved and this is an assignment agreement. I think it would be unreasonable for us to deny the assignment. That's the item in front of us. That's why I don't think it's necessary or reasonable to, to extend it. And frankly, also out of courtesy that we've got 20 people in the room who flew over here from China to be here for this wonderful kickoff. And I think it would be rude to kick it down the road for unnecessarily.
What about us and your, your colleagues, the mayor and a council member?
If I may ask staff, as far as if we were to push this back for two weeks for the mayor and for Councilman Buie to study this in detail, any issues as far as timeline, as far as groundbreaking? Because I know from myself, now or two weeks from now, I'm going to vote yes on this issue, short of, you know, a sea change course that I didn't expect to see. I don't see the change from now in two weeks. But I do see and appreciate what Councilman Buie is saying, that even though we had this agreement well in advance of past two years, he didn't see it until tonight. And so barring a detrimental reason why we have to pass it tonight, I would not be opposed to give him the extra two weeks to review the, the matter.
Yeah, Councilmember Fawn, I think, you know, in our conversations with the two parties, they are working through some things. You know, if you were to wait until the 28th, I, I don't, I think our concern was going any farther than that. And that people like Land and Design start to miss some deadlines that they were up against and that was going to be giving everybody a lot of, a lot of heartburn. And we just didn't want to go down that road. Could you wait until the 28th? You know, I, you know, I don't think that's, it's a deal killer for the project short of somebody standing up and telling me I'm wrong. But we are, we are, we are, we do want to keep the project on pace. We've got a great partner that has come to the table, that has worked with Land and Design. We certainly appreciate, you know, everything that they are, are, are doing, both in, you know, their purchase of the Hyatt Hotel, all the improvements that they're going to make there, in addition to their interest in Site C. So we've had great conversations with them. And I do want to say to Councilman Buie and the mayor, you know, maybe it's, you know, our fault a bit for not sitting down and really going through and rehashing, you know, the 2013 agreement to make sure that everybody understands it real, real closely. And I'm, you know, a bit new to the city myself as well. So is, so is our economic development director. We've got some different people. So we don't all have the history. And should the council want to go to the 28th, we would certainly be happy as a staff to sit down with both the mayor, Councilman Buie, individually, together, however, go through that 2013 agreement, page by page, if you'd like us to, to just make sure that you understand everything and that we're all on the same page. So we wanted to move forward today, but we understand we did give things to you late and you didn't get a chance to see everything. So we defer to your, your judgment about, you know, what direction you'd like us to go in.
Thank you. Would you be voting to support the motion?
Yeah, with the, to the two parties involved, I do, you know, I do regret that you're here from overseas, from far away to see this kickoff. Well, but as you can see from our discussion, that it would be, I think, in all fairness to our two city council members, actually to Councilman Buie and to our mayor, that have more time to review the entire agreement. And so with your permission, I would like to make a motion.
No, we, we have a motion already.
Yeah, there, there already is a
You would just be voting to support Councilmember Buie's motion to continue this item to the next city council meeting, which has been seconded by myself.
And I'll just chime in kind of apologetically to the developer and to the applicant that out of professional courtesy, I'll give you two weeks to review this because I understand.
Well, I, I just want to be, to be doing the writing and perhaps, you know, at the next city council, I will, you know, it's, there's nothing here that say that I will, I will not support this project. I just want to have time and give our resident the time to, to understand this so that they, we go through the correct procedures and process when we vote on this. And, you know, I do apologize for having you have to go back and wait for another two weeks, especially when you come all the way over here from Shanghai.
Okay. Please vote.
And that's to continue for
This is the motion from Councilmember Buie, seconded by myself, to continue to next council meeting.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Thank you, colleagues. Appreciate your support. Okay. And before we adjourn, I'm going to check in with Mr. Stiles first.
Mr. Mayor, nothing other than to just again remind all of our community residents and everyone listening that we are having our 60th birthday party this Saturday, 4 o'clock. So we want everybody to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beard?
Nothing.
Councilmember Buie?
I will be on vacation starting at the 23rd, June 23rd. I will come back on the morning of the 5th. I will be, I will, I probably will be able to make the council meeting next, as the next city council.
Councilmember Fan?
Yes, I'd like to ask to agendize two action items for next time. One would be for a small vehicle stipend for our next city council. I know, Mayor, we had talked in the past about possibly increasing the salary and we had discussed to put it over until a later date. I think better for us to discuss a possible vehicle stipend versus a raise in our salary. I'd like to ask for a motion and a vote to put that as an action item for next time. So I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on just agendizing this? Please vote.
Okay. Could you please revote? The board said seven people voted in. Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay. And then my second request is to put as an action item on the agenda to make Mr. Omar Sandoval our city attorney instead of our acting city attorney. I've seen his work recently in the last few months, very impressed with his performance. I would ask that we put that for discussion and for possible action. So make a motion to make that happen.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? You know, I did request when Mr. Nixon was here, that there be an evaluation. And there was an evaluation. And then subsequently, Mr. Nixon resigned, or rather retired. And we have the acting city attorney here who's been in place and has done a good job. However, we didn't take the opportunity to go out for bid. And we do that with all city services. He's not a city employee.
Hold on. Aren't we just agendizing this for discussion at the next meeting?
Yeah, we're discussing it. I, I don't want to do that. This is my discussion. Thank you, Mayor Portem Jones. So it's, it's kind of, you know, Russian to it when we haven't done our due diligence for the public. That's how I feel about it. I'd rather us look at options, certainly have an RFP done as we would do for any other city service, and come back to us. Certainly, the current firm and Mr. Omar Sandoval can reply and submit a proposal. That's the proper thing we should be doing. We're a public body. So I'm not okay with just agendizing that appointment when we haven't gone through a process. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes with mayor win voting no.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Mayor Portem Jones?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
I would like to agendize an item, or maybe we do not need to, if the city attorney can clarify that. I would like to get a written minutes of our meetings. In the past, we, we have, you know, the minutes in writing. And ever since we switched to video recording, it is very difficult for me. It took me a long time to have to listen to the video to, you know, go back and review what was, we, you know, what was discussed and how we decide. And there have been numerous situations when people's memory was wrong and they just simply don't have time to listen to a, you know, a few hour video online to figure out what going on. A written minute would, would, would allow one to jump in and quickly, you know, follow what was discussed and what was decided on. I do not know how, how expensive or how much resource is it put on the, you know, the office of the clerk. But I would like to see that, you know, going back. Do we need to discuss that at the, as an action item or we just, that's something that's just being addressed by the city manager?
If, if you want to take action rather than just give direction, it, it should be an action item. And we can provide a staff report, give you the different options for minutes. I mean, there's action minutes, there's action plus, and then there's verbatim.
You know, let's, let's, let's just give direction. If there's no opposition to this, colleagues, if there isn't any opposition, let's just give direction to Mr. Stiles to work and, and figure out how we can do that. And you can work directly with Mr. Buie. Okay? All right. Thank you. And
Well, with a caveat, I don't know what the expense would be involved. I mean, you're talking about like working something out for the Councilman Buie. That could be a verbatim and that's an expense and that's time and that's commitment. And as a former city clerk, I know that's a lot of work. And, and the way our information's indexed, and I'm getting into a discussion right now, I think maybe it's best that we have a discussion on this. I think maybe it's best that we have a discussion on this.
So, okay.
Let's agenda.
Let me clarify, normally, if it's only for discussion from staff, we're not gonna spend a lot of time writing staff reports and doing a lot of research. If you agendize it as an action item, we'll have a staff report, and we'll do a little bit more work for you to be able to deliberate and give us, you know, take action on the item. So that's the difference.
And, Mr. Mayor and members of council, let me say that just at any time that you would like to give us that direction in the proper way that the city attorney is advising, we, I would, I would confer with the city clerk, and we'd give you some different options based on the complexity of what, so you have some different options about what might serve your needs and, and work best, whether it's something really complex, not as complex. And so we'll, we'll await your.
Okay, so if there's no objection, then Mr. Styles, please bring that back to us at a future date. Okay? Just as an informational item for discussion, we can.
Yeah. Agenda item for discussion.
No, 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 not agenda. Agenda, we have to vote, take action.
So just to make sure that I understand, so at the next council meeting.
It doesn't have to be the next one. I mean.
There's no need to.
It's nothing urgent.
So, okay. So at, at, what you're suggesting is at some point in time, come back to us with some information about some options.
Four weeks, six weeks, come back with an option, and then we decide whether we need to agenda it for a vote, or we just go do it.
Thank you.
After the discussion.
Yep.
And we could, to, I'm sorry.
And if we could to, perhaps at that discussion, a little bit of input about the cost, the possibilities, we have an idea of how much it would cost us.
Okay, okay. So, all right. I'm, we're gonna end on a very sad note here. I just want to say a few words about the tragic shooting that took place this weekend in Orlando. It's almost unbelievable to realize that we've come so far, this far, as a society. The hard lessons we've learned from the past, and the peaceful future that we want for ourselves and our children, that there are those who choose violence as some kind of solution to differences. This heartless act of cruelty killed 49 people, most of them just starting their adult lives. Those who survived were severely injured, both physically and emotionally. And we pray for the recovery of the wounded and give thanks that they are miraculously spared. And for the families, friends, and loved ones of the victims, we keep them in our thoughts as we live with the anguish and pain that no one should ever go through. Our hearts go out to all those who have been affected by this act of inhumanity, as we join other communities around the world to grieve and to hope that there is a final end to all these violent attacks. It starts by finding the understanding and compassion for all people to make that happen. Thank you.